Forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and give us time to conviction for deliver us from evil by the kingdom, the power, and the glory forevermore. Amen.
The allegiance to life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which sustains one nation like a God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item C on the agenda, approval of minutes from December 7th, 2020 regular council meeting minutes. The minute shall stand approved unless there are any objections or corrections. Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Moving on to item D is citizen communication. There's anyone in the audience that would like to address council? Anything that is not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone there. We'll get that set up.
Can I sit down?
Sure, could you also...
She signed in already.
Oh, you did sign in already?
Yeah, she signed in.
I signed in.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we do just let you know we do have a five-minute rule that I'll start the clock now.
Okay. First if everyone would take one of these, just as any pressure course. My name is Kathy Hoover and I have sent emails to all of you on November the 5th regarding a sewer hookup at my house, my construction home I should say. In just going over this, you can see on the invoice page where I was billed, the things circled will match if you turn the flip it over to $1,600 for the excavation for utilities. Everything else that's highlighted is money that cost me extra in fees. And I will go back over, like I said, each of you received an email that I'm building at 201 Hurst Street here in Napoleon. We had everything come out and to be marked regarding those sewer hookups. And when the first mark was put down, we dug down and they said it would be seven to 10 feet and it became farther than that, so we had to fill the hole so that we could go get a cage for them to go into, to go deeper. So when the guys would get down in there to do the hookup. We went down a total of 13 feet and there was nothing there. So then we had called the city and they sent someone else out and they marked it 22 feet to the west from where we had been digging. Now, we were digging six-foot holes wide and it was 22 feet to the west, which then put it beside a tree. The tree had to come down, which I will say graciously the city did cut that down, but it was partway on the right of way I found out. And they had used some sort of a paper map. Tree cut down, stump, we had to remove this stump, started digging, nothing again. So we called again. Aaron Dublin came out and like I said in my email, kudos to Aaron for being able to read the map because he marked it, he was within four inches of where it was, which was between the two markings, which we had one here and we had one here and it was right here. So the first one I don't feel was my fault because I was told, I was told by the sewer department, Jeff Rathke, that the information on the path that he was using was the wrong information for my area. The map isn't correct. Not my fault, as far as I'm concerned. Second, Mr. Rathke himself is what I understand came out and measured it and it was wrong. Again, not my fault, it was marked by the city as to where it should be. Aaron came out, marked it, like I said, within three, within four inches of where it was. So this has cost me a total extra money of $4,050. Now, since my email to you on November the 5th, I have received a check for $1,200 from the city as reimbursement. I have not cashed that check because I'm understanding that if you cash a check, then you're considering you're satisfied with the reimbursement. I am not. This is, I am out of pocket $2,850 due to the city's mistakes. I would like to be reimbursed my $2,850.
All right. Well, thank you Kathy. I did read your emails and I guess I would not...
Oh, excuse me. Thank you Dan Baer for being the only one to respond to my email too. I appreciate that, thank you.
I did not have an answer for you.
No, you did not, but you did respond and I was hoping that everybody read it, but go ahead.
I never got it. I never got it.
You got the first one. You didn't get the one, you were attached to the one that was, went out in August that I sent. It went to Joel Mazur, Jeff Rathke, Greg Coolman, Chad Love, Jason Mazel, and Joe.
Okay.
That went out on August the 21st.
But not the second one?
No, the second one I only sent to the council members.
When I did read that, I felt the frustration and I know you put in there how would you feel and things and I would feel the same way, just want to let you know. I want to first turn it over to Joel right now because I know you've been involved in this and were you the one that authorized the 1,200 or explain how that works so we know how this process?
Yeah, typically we do, especially when it's private property utility, I mean there's responsibility on the homeowners, on the property, private property owners' part as well. So just, you know, I want to point that out too. When we go out and mark utilities, they call in and oops, take it. We go out and we mark to the best of what we have, but they're trying to locate a private utility hookup. So on that end, there is some responsibility on the homeowner's side typically what, you know, we want to provide a good service. Obviously, you know, we could have done a better job. The two people that she referenced that did the markings originally have a combined over 60 years' experience just in sewers and, you know, it's, you know, it's not uncommon to have services mismarked either. But again, it's, you know, in that aspect, I felt as a city manager that, because this did actually happen once before since I've been here, where we did something a little differently. We were able to get access the right of way and dig out our end of the utility and locate it. And that was again between contractor and our staff. You know, we can only tell somebody that where something is so much and then there's responsibility, responsibility on their part too as well. And there's a certain way to even locate utilities. So it's not our contractor that's being hired to locate these utilities, it's somebody else's contractor. So whatever means they use to do their private work is on them. You see what I mean? So it's not entirely, you know, how we would have done it. I talked with Jeff Rathke, I've talked with Chad. Chad, jump in at any time if you have anything to add. But, you know, I talked to them both personally about this and we felt that, you know, the last dig came for that last dig on our end, even though there's no obligation on the city's end to pay anything on this. But we felt it was, it was right to make up for that last dig. So when Aaron located it. So that's, that's the explanation as to why to, on the $1,200 piece. Other than that, it's just, it's not an obligation on our part and there is some responsibility on the private property owner's side. We try to do our best in locating, but, you know, obviously in this circumstance, we couldn't locate it properly. I don't know if you can provide anything as to what happened, but...
I wasn't there. I do know the water sewer, sewer rules say we would try to locate utilities to the best of our ability and the best information we have available. Field personnel didn't have apparently the correct information, but that wasn't their fault.
Nor is mine.
Please, Aaron was able to find some additional information and some old files, that's how he located it. But also by us doing this effort, the contractor and homeowner were not required to locate the tap on their own by putting a video camera inside the sewer with a robot to locate that tap. My staff gave it the best effort they had with the information they had available.
Are the residents required to have the city come out to mark things when they're doing digging in their yard?
They're required to have utilities located through the state of Ohio, utility notification. We will mark them if we have information, but we can only mark what we know. There are parts of town we have zero information on the location of taps. In those cases, the property owner is required to put a robot in the sewer main and locate that sewer tap.
Kathy, I want to make sure I understand your math. You want us to basically reimburse the highlighted portions, is that what you want?
Less the $1,200, yes. And not the ones circled either. The ones circled...
No, just the highlighted ones, right?
Yeah, the 1,800, 1,600, 1,400, and 250. And then that, you know, less the $1,200 is $2,850.
Okay, I'm with you now, okay.
Okay.
At first, the math didn't make sense. I understand what you're saying.
So it sounds like we reimburse her for the dig that was actually at the right spot. And Kathy, you're asking for the...
The final dig, the final. Is that correct? That was the final?
Mm-hmm.
Where the tap was located?
Right, the $1,200. But all of the mistake ones, you know, I'm, I'm supposed to be taking care of. And I just don't feel that's fair because like he said, the customer has a certain responsibility. Okay, where do I find the maps? Where, you know, how, what kind of responsibility do I really have? I'm a taxpayer. I live in the city of Napoleon right now. I work in the city of Napoleon. I called my city and asked them to please mark this, mismarked twice before it was found. It's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand you have 60 years' experience, but, you know, I, again, it was on the tablet that the gentleman used and they told me, Jeff told me flat out when I called him, he said that had the wrong information on it. And then the paper map came out and I'm, I don't know if it's the same paper map that Aaron had or not, but Aaron read it directly and marked it and like I said, he was four inches off.
Is this normally the contractor that does this? How does this normally for other builds in town?
Most contractors will come to the engineering department and ask for copies of our records. If we have records, we provide them. It's about a 50/50 chance whether we have them or not.
So usually if we have them, the contractor does the marking themselves?
Roger...
We'll oops it, we gotta oops it, I understand that.
Right, and usually the oops is when Roger and the field crews will mark it.
Yeah.
But absolutely that map on the tablet is not 100% accurate. That's that GIS map we've been working on for seven years. It is not believable.
I'd like to ask Billy, our law director, I'm sure he's on right now, if he's had any time to look into this and if he has any recommendations for us.
I've been briefed on this in the evening.
We're having a hard time hearing you Billy. Hold on one second. Go ahead and try again.
Better?
A little bit, there's a little bit of background noise.
Feedback.
I have been briefed on this and the map that builds, particularly in this situation, is that the word you...
Yeah, we're not able to hear you other than that you have not been briefed on this.
I thought you said you had been briefed on it. So it's a good thing we're not hearing it. Because I heard something different, okay.
Do you want to come join us?
Were you right there?
Thank you.
So if the GIS is not up to date, so if, I mean, if you're not certain that that's correct, why would that be used first?
It's the best information we have and water sewer will say we mark it to the best information we have. Fortunately, Aaron was able to find an old file we didn't, we don't know where it existed and that's what he used.
So how does the GIS get updated?
We have, we've had a $100,000 contract with Stan Tech every year for the last several years. I've been trying to hire a person to fill that role internally and haven't had any success. We don't have the staff to do it, so it's a still process. But someone has to sit there and physically manually enter that information into these electronic maps.
From the old paper maps?
Yes. And we have an intern that's doing that right now for three weeks over his Christmas break.
May I ask a question? Are there two separate maps then? Did Jeff Rathke brought one out and then Aaron got ahold of another one? Or was it the same map?
Well, there are, there would be maps that are GIS and then there are paper maps that might be an old set of plans and not all plans are in the GIS. They're continually getting updated, but they can only do so much in a certain amount of time. Not everything in our plan room has been put into the GIS system. The GIS is what they have in view.
But both Jeff and Aaron brought paper maps out. So just Rogers, the one that used the GIS computer?
I wasn't there.
Wait a minute here for Billy to come in. Hi Billy.
Hello.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you at all, there's a lot of kind of feedback. So we didn't hear your response when I asked you about that.
On the mic, I guess here. Can you hear me okay? So the basics of it from what I've seen so far, the path chosen by Joel made the most sense and was following the rules and seemed like a fair resolution. So that's, that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
So Joel, we basically, we paid for one of them, right?
Yeah.
And we dug, Kathy dug four times?
Yep. I'm out $2,850.
I understand.
Yeah, I guess when we first talked about it, I think there were two digs that were done, there were two markings, one by Roger, one by Jeff. And then the third one...
Because we had to go get, well, the second, we had dug twice in one spot and we had to go because of the, had to go get the cage thing for them to be in.
Okay, that's what we're seeing on here, there's four. They dug in one, stopped...
Right.
Backfilled it, got cage, opened it back up.
Right.
Okay.
For safety purposes, didn't leave it open.
I understand. Yep. Okay. Makes more sense.
Chad, how many times would you say, just average, a year do we do?
How many times do we mark them?
Yeah, for customers, for residents.
An estimated would be one every week, one every two weeks.
Okay.
So anywhere 25 to 50 times a year.
Right. So most of the time we're pretty accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting, I wanted to make sure, I didn't know if it was five times a year or, you know, 50, 70 times a year.
I only recall a couple other times over the year where we've had something this marked by a fair amount.
Right.
We're allowed to be off by a foot and a half per oops regulations, but it depends on the information we have. Like I said, generally, we don't always mark the laterals, we're required to mark the mains.
I guess I realize that there are rules and what's stated isn't that, that it's our responsibility and the homeowner or the resident has some responsibility as well. I guess I'm just putting myself in Kathy's position as if I call and somebody comes out, whoever it is, and says, yes, that's where it is. And that's what we do 50 times plus a year and unless, I guess, just thinking out loud here is, I mean, do we tell the resident? We may be wrong, we're not sure and have them sign something and say, hey, I know that this is not a guess, but it's not 100% accurate. Or since we're usually so good at this that, hey, that's where it is and 99% of the time it is. I would like to see us maybe give her a little bit more than the $1,200 in my opinion.
I actually would agree with that, Joe. I mean, I just, I mean, I understand what, like you say, I understand what the rule, I don't know, I don't have a mic over here, do I? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. But the bottom line is, I would be very frustrated if it was me and there are people, I mean, I realize she's not a senior citizen, but there are people who are senior citizens who are on fixed income and if it would happen to them, I would see...
I'm very close.
I would see that as an issue. I, I don't know, I would find it very frustrating if I was in Kathy's position. I would agree with what you're saying.
Thankfully, our people are so good, this comes up very rarely.
Exactly, yeah.
You know what I mean? So it's, but it seems like when it comes up, we gotta do something to at least partially make it, make it better.
Well, I think one of the things procedurally is that on our end going forward, so we don't have this again, we'll have to take a look internally at how to, you know, not take on that responsibility even. You know what I mean? Because, I mean, it is a good service, but, you know, when we miss, then it's, then it turns into this. It's almost like, it feels like from a, from a manager's perspective, it feels like a no good deed goes unpunished kind of a thing. So that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the hard one to take and I know that Roger and Jeff both have, you know, a great deal of pride in what they do. You know, I mean, everybody makes mistakes, so, but, you know, to prevent something like this from happening, so homeowners aren't incurring costs and the city's not incurring costs. We just change in our procedures and go with the route of if you can't find it, then you can camera it and do that round instead.
You mean stop doing the...
We can do locates, but we can just tell them that, hey, look, this is, this is, you know, a take or leave it thing and if you want, I mean, it's always, the homeowner always has, I should, the property owner, because it could be a business or anything, always reserves the right to access and handle the sewer line. So that's, that's what it comes down to. So, and that, I'm assuming that was a vacant lot?
Yes, it was.
So that's, that's what, that's what makes it tougher marking on vacant lots or like the one that was earlier this year, it was a long stretch of height and it was at an angle. So, you know, when you, when you start to get one or two degrees off, your margin widens when you try to do a marking that's, that's a long distance. So there was something like that that had occurred earlier in the year. We were able to handle it by getting our crew out there locating it, which they did right away. And this one being on the street where it was, we didn't, we don't dig on the private property owner's property, we would have to dig on the city's street and actually have a dig at the, at the street line where we'd have to do utility patch or something like that. So that's what, hence the reason why the 1,200 and our crews didn't go and locate it that last time because of the, was, was kind of a trade-off. So, but that's, that's kind of, you know, rather than continuing to mark, you know, mark maybe mark one time and say the only other alternative is to camera it, you know, that's the information we have and let it be that.
Right.
Most of you know I work at a bank, you know, and if there's been a mistake made, we'll do everything in our power to correct it, you know, for that customer. You know, whether it was, sometimes whether it was truly our fault or not, miscommunication, whatever, we will still take care of that and reimburse the customer or whatever needs to be done. Or if I've misquoted a fee when I'm doing a mortgage loan, if it's not on their original closing or disclosure form, we eat it as the bank. Again, not my customer's fault that I missed that.
All right. Well, in this case, we're talking about, you know, taxpayers' money also, so we don't want to just absorb every, either, you know, mistake or miscommunication, but I think in this one, it's worth looking into and I'd like to put this on the agenda for the water and sewer department and talk about different procedure where, number one, have the customer sign something that they understand. I mean, like you said, in banking and in a lot of things, we have customers sign things and people say, why would you have to tell us that? Well, because things like this happen and then we need to move forward and do it, put a disclosure out there, disclaimer that says, hey, we may not be 100% accurate if we're, we're not, we're not liable for it. At least then the customer knows ahead of time that, that's not guaranteed. And then they can choose at that time to use the, the robot and go into the sewer and do that opposed to the way it was done for you.
Well, I guess my point too also is, you know, I'm asking to be reimbursed the $2,850. Like you said, if they did have to go out into the city, it'd cost you more to do the patchwork on the, on the asphalt and all the manpower.
Right.
Hire someone to do that, so I'm, I don't know.
Unless anyone else on council has any other suggestions or motions, I'd like to move it to the water sewer department where...
Committee, right?
The committee.
Yes.
I agree. So if we have to talk about procedure from here on out, we might as well do it all at once.
Right.
I think we need to look at both the procedure and what may be additional now in this case we can get...
And Joel, where would, where did that $1,200 come from?
Sewer.
Okay, that's, that's why I was thinking, we'll send it to the water sewer committee since it'll come out of that fund. If anything, is increased from that $1,200. And then also talk about a new procedure to put in place. So I apologize, it will take a little bit longer to go through the committee and then come back to council, but I believe that's the way system's set up, make sure that we talk about it until we come up with a good resolution.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in and bringing it to us.
How will I be notified? Should I come to the next council meeting? I mean, I'm not sure what you...
So the next water sewer committee will happen the second Monday in January, so that will be on the agenda for that, for that committee meeting Kathy.
Okay.
That will probably start, use at 7:00, which is usually when it's scheduled to start. Either 6:15 or 7:00 that day, usually electric starts at 6:15 and the water...
Should I, I mean, do I have to be here? Do I, for that? I mean, I'm not sure what you want me to do.
You don't have to, you're, you're welcome if you wanted to discuss it.
Second Monday?
Correct.
At 6:15?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Seven, it's 7:00 unless electric committee's at 6:15. If for some reason it's nothing on the agenda for electric committee, usually the water... If for some reason it's nothing on the agenda for electric committee, usually the water sewer committee moves up to that spot.
Okay.
Most likely it's going to be at 7:00.
The Northwest City does a nice job of, I don't know, Brian Kellison, the Northwest City does a nice job of telling when the committee meetings are going to be, so that's good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E, Henry County Chamber Budget Presentation. Joel Miller.
Thanks, everybody. And I apologize for not being able to be here for my normal November budget hearing time. I was quarantined at that point in time. And Joel passed along one document, but I appreciate you guys being able to give me a little bit of time to answer any questions, fill you in on the things that, that we did this year. I've got a little packet in front of you that, again, are our main paper communications and things that we use. Of course, the biggest thing that we use now is our, is our website and, you know, our person-to-person contact with it. So, again, a refresher for Molly and Ross, I think maybe this is you guys' second time through this kind of process of me talking about it. But what we're talking about here is half of the ordinance that does the lodging tax through the city through revised code. You guys have to give those funds to, by contract, to another organization that, that takes care of tourism for you. And the chamber is it, and this is what we do year in, year out. And I love coming in here and getting a chance to talk to you guys a little bit about this and the things that we're doing to try to bring people in. And of course, I'd like to have much better news about this year, but this year was a complete wreck and a mess of a year like anything else. You know, so many events canceled, and that's our main focus for, for the extra dollars for this. And this is a dollar in, dollar out thing. So any of the public funds that are sent our way are expended within that year or a little bit of a carryover through the year. Joel's got up on the screen there, the, the budget that we have. I spoke with Joel and Kelly before this earlier on.
I can see it, okay.
Good.
And these numbers with COVID the way it is are a guess. And it's our plan for what we want to do. I think we carried over around $4,000-some dollars into the carryover, but we feel third quarter was, was back to normal levels and even a little bit higher. The majority of our travelers that, that use these dollars are business travelers. So that business portion came back up, they came back, and, and things were, were running smoothly third quarter. We'll see what fourth quarter turns out. But those are our basic dollars that we see coming through for the next year and some of my notes on the side over there. And I'll make a note here that our main focus for this is in that advertising area. We want to help advertise a bounce back into events, hopefully, you know, fingers crossed that the vaccine does what it's supposed to do, people feel comfortable coming back out. Organizations and groups and attractions can have their events again. The line item that's there for sponsorships is where we, our board serves as the Visitors' Bureau Board as well. And they expend funds out in an application process to different organizations to help them supplement their event. And a lot of what we encourage them to do is extra advertising. So we bring people in from farther out so they can see the things that Henry County and Napoleon have to offer and stick around, hopefully come back for something else, whatever it may be. That's what we're trying to do with this as much as we possibly can. Not knowing where we're going to be and what we're going to do, we are planning a big website redo this year. We're putting funds on the chamber side toward that. So you'll be seeing a brand-new website within the next two months. And a lot of the visitors' end of that are a big events calendar. We're going to have different itineraries for people to use. So if they're coming and staying for a day, staying somewhere here, where do I go? Well, okay, here, we've got this winery and restaurant tour, that kind of thing, history tour, you know, different things where people can self-guided take themselves around and go to different stops around the city and the county and, and learn a little bit about those areas and have some fun, hopefully get you through our downtown area and, and enjoying themselves, driving around, that kind of thing, give them something to, to enjoy. So that's a couple of the ideas that we're going to, to put new on our website as well. We had a contract with, if you're familiar with Guy and the 419, we had a contract with him to do some live videos for us, but then when everything shut down, it's like, I don't want to promote these things and waste our eight different videos for the year that we have and then have people not be able to enjoy them. So we will be revisiting that with him once things open back up again. And we'll be posting these videos, obviously, on social media and on our website as well. So some of the things that, that, you know, we're planning on doing, that we want to be proactive with, and, you know, we see ourselves as the leaders in getting people back out into, not only locally back out into the businesses and the, and the destinations and the events, but also people coming in from outside as well. People hopefully are going to be itching to travel. I think there already are a lot of people who are and a lot of people who aren't, we get it. So hopefully those who are and feel comfortable about it will be invited to come back out and do some traveling again. So we are projecting, obviously, a down number for the year, but that's okay. Again, we spend what, what's here and, and send it out and hopefully have it do some good, plant some seeds. That's really what our goal is with this each and every year. But I'm here to answer questions too, so anything anybody wants to know. Dan.
Joel, I know I asked you this a year ago, but I also know that it can make a difference in, you know, money coming in. Is the Holiday Inn still on track for taking over that hotel, or are they out of that?
They still say they are going to be rebranding themselves as a Holiday Inn Express. The last time I had talked with them was probably two, three months ago. Does COVID affect that? I don't know. You know, that's a, that's a financial decision and a, a decision for Napoleon and in Suites. But yes, that's still in their planning. They know that they need to get re-affiliated. You know, when people travel, they want to travel with a familiar brand. They want to do something in that area. Or maybe, like I said, business travelers are our core, and if they have those, you know, those Holiday Inn, you know, points or the Hilton Express numbers, you know, those kind of things, they, they look for those places when they do, and you're more apt to stick around and stop at a place. So that is definitely their hope. They were really looking forward to doing it this year, but I haven't, I haven't gotten any update other than.
Unfortunately, that industry's really been negatively affected by the whole thing.
Right, correct.
I can have an update for that. My brother stayed at that hotel, and when he called me, he said, hey, I got a room at Holiday Inn in Napoleon. I said, there isn't one. He goes, well, I hope there is, because he used his points and things. And, and I ended up going there also. And it was, so that was in, that was around October 12th or something like that. And at the time, they didn't have a front desk and they had all the mattresses, but the third floor was completely done when they were listed as Holiday Inn.
Right.
So it sounds like it's moving.
Yeah, they, they had every intention of doing it and, and, you know, I don't know the roadblocks that were thrown in their way through this year, but that, you know, they, they know that's, that's lifeblood for any of these types of businesses. So, yeah, I would be surprised if, hopefully, things weren't done quickly.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
So I hear some other places also, there's some Airbnbs now in Napoleon. Do you know, like approximately, how many there are and?
We have six, I believe. Heidi was doing an updating of our, our numbers the other day in the city of Napoleon. There are more throughout the county as well. But there are six here, and, and the main two that get used are Julie and Steve Bushes at the, at the Emporium. Those are used all the time and people love them. So, you know, they, their work in, in, in kind of, you know, helping this area out really goes a long way. And that helps the others too. And I know they've, they've kind of helped some people, kind of taken them under their wing, saying, here, here are the different things that, that you have to do. We've done that as well with people who are considering it, whether there's something about, you know, changing a, you know, part of their property or buying something and fixing it up, those kind of things. I've had different conversations over the last six to eight months with people for both of those areas where they've either got a space that they want to do it, you know, a, you know, a home where a parent had moved to Florida or Arizona, or they're looking to build something new, fix something up, that kind of thing too. So we're trying to encourage that as well. That, that's the way of, of travel in a lot of ways, that people do either through Airbnb or Verbo or whatever it may be. That's a lot of the future of things as well.
Good.
Yeah, so we're trying to stay on the front of that. And it's perfect for business travelers as well. We get a lot of people who are coming in for a three, four-month span out of Campbell's or someplace like that, Old Castle, and, and, you know, they, they don't want to stay in a hotel for four months, you know? So we, we see more and more of that and people taking advantage of that kind of option as well.
Joel, last year, we budgeted X dollars, 50% of an app that was going to take place contingent on the other half being funded. I take it that did not get funded?
That did not, correct.
And the plan is just to roll the functionality of that app into the new website?
As much as we can, yeah. Those of you who remember it, a lot of it was, you can make your own itinerary. I still love that idea. And so we're working with that to be able to do it. I'll be honest with you, Ross, I'm very happy that we didn't decide to do that. Our board voted not to do it because they were afraid of the, of the funding on our end month to month, whether, whether we could do that or not. And with everything that happened, I'm glad we didn't, because we would be in a tough spot right now if it was, you know, $3,000, you know, in a year, and that would continue on for, I think, I believe that was three-year contract for, for it. So we think we can do a lot of those same kind of things and do it within this new, with this new thing. And we're having a local developer do it for us. Kelly from, Kelly Goings from Natural Design and Graphics is doing the, the website for us, and she feels that she can do a lot of what we asked for as well.
Fair.
So I was disappointed with it when it happened, but, you know, after the board talked about it, we knew it was the right decision to make financially. It's just a matter of what can we, what can we beg, borrow, and steal from that and put it into place?
I've heard, I've talked to a few people recently, for whatever reason, about the calendar, the event calendar on the chamber site, and people really appreciate that and do a really nice job, so don't change that.
It'll stay, it'll stay the same. And, and a lot of, a lot of the backend of it that we're doing is to save money to use for other things too. And, and, you know, we paid a monthly, or a yearly database fee to the company that we worked with. And in talking with Kelly, we can do everything functionality with a database that is built in a one-time fee and, and put in place. So we're not going to be seeing the yearly fees, I believe it was $2,400 that we were paying a year, that then we can put back into other community projects through the chamber. So it's, it's just a smart thing to do. And that, that's the main, you know, that, that in our business listings on the chamber side of things, not the event wise, are the two main things that people come to our website for. So that's something that, we, we told them, that's our line in the sand. We need to keep these as similar as possible and as easy to use as possible for people or we're going to keep it the way it is and, you know, eat the cost. And, yeah, we'll, that's, those are our two main goals to keep. So, but thank you for that, that note. It's, it's something we're pretty proud of. Heidi Brooks, very hard on it. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Yeah, and thank you for the great partnership again, whenever we need something through any of the departments, be it electric, or Tony, or Joel, or whoever it may be, you know, we do a lot of different projects that have something to do with different events, and we always get great cooperation from these guys. So I want to just take a moment to thank them for everything and helping us get these things around. And thanks for the time for tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Understanding why I couldn't be here a month or so.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you. Okay, moving on to item F, reports from council committees. F1, Electric Committee for December 14th, 2020 was canceled due to lack of agenda items. F2, Water, Sewer, Refuge, Recycling, and Litter Committee met on December 14th, 2020 and referred sewer and water rates recommendations to City Council. Also recommended Section 925.08 placement of containers be amended to add refuse and recycling. Containers placed at the curb in front of customers' residence are to be removed from the curb within 24 hours after pickup. Item F3, Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee was canceled due to lack of agenda items. And the Parks and Rec Board or Committee Meeting did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item H, Introduction of New Ordinances and Resolutions. H1 is ordinance number 076-20, an ordinance authorizing a one-time gross payment for the City of Napoleon, Ohio, Law Director, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Subpo.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Just putting you on the spot here.
So we'll do it.
Council has put together an ordinance to pay the Law Director a one-time gross pay in January of 2021 for $2,500. Anyone have any other, any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on to item H2, Ordinance Number 077-20, an ordinance authorizing a one-time gross payment to the City of Napoleon, Ohio, City Manager, and declaring an emergency. Motion?
Second.
Okay, and this is the same as the first one, $2,500 lump sum payment to the City Manager, which will occur January 2021.
So we'll come back in January on the 4th and pass it under suspension with emergency?
Would that be?
That's the first meeting in January, January the 4th.
Right. Mm-hmm. We can, we can do that at that time?
It'll be two reads then, it'll still get paid in January. Three reads will be the 18th, and it's just close to the end of the month.
Right, okay.
I would like to do three reads if possible.
We can do three, I'm just, just, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll do the third one then on the 18th, if I'm doing my mental math right.
Yeah. Kelly, are you on?
Yes.
If we do the three reads and the last one is on the 18th, would we still be able to make this payment in January?
Yes, because there's three, I believe there's three pages in January.
Okay.
So it'd be on the last page.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, item H3, Ordinance Number 078-20, an ordinance authorizing a one-time gross payment to the City of Napoleon, Ohio, Finance Director, and declaring an emergency. Motion?
Second.
Okay, and this is the same as the last two, one gross payment of $2,500 in January 2021 to the Finance Director. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, item H4, Ordinance Number 079-20, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, Supplement Number 8, for the year 2020, and declaring an emergency and suspension is requested. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Kelly.
Thank you. These are for the year end. Right now, we have to supplement the income tax fund because the, the actual are coming in higher than the estimate. There will be more added as we close out the year and keep you guys updated. And it'll stay open until we roll the year.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Any questions or comments? Okay, Rocks, please call the roll.
Do you have a motion for suspension?
Oh, thank you.
Subpo.
Second.
Okay, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension.
With emergency.
With emergency. Item H5, ordinance number 080-20, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation for, from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to the ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Suspension is requested as well. Have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. Currently, we do not have any transfer appropriations, but like I said on the other one, it's for the year-end close. And as we go along, we'll likely have some. And if we don't, then we would ask for it to be rescinded in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion for suspension.
Sub move.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item H6, Resolution Number 081-20, a resolution authorizing the Finance Director to transfer certain fund balances, Transfer Number 5, from respective funds to other funds per ORC Section 5705.14, on as-needed basis in fiscal year 2020, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. This is the final piece of the year-end closeout. Right now, there's currently enough transfers of funds, but as we go along, there will likely be some. Thank you.
And you are requesting suspension on this as well?
Yes, please.
Motion for suspension.
Thank you.
Second.
Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll on the resolution.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item H7, Resolution Number 082-20, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a supplemental agreement with EKETON USA Corporation without the necessity of public bidding, further authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars, and declaring an emergency, and suspension is requested. Have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. I've got another one requesting suspension. We kind of briefly touched on this last council meeting. So what I have up on the screen right now is not in this packet, was in the last packet from the December seventh, or, yeah, December seventh meeting, council meeting, and kind of gives the little more detailed explanation of what the request is. Rather than put this operation of sludge de-watering during construction into the bid, it's actually cheaper for us to repress ourselves and operate it, and then we'll be able to move out de-watered sludge a little easier on our own. So overall, it is a, it is a cost savings for the project overall, and it is critical for the wastewater treatment plant to operate while under construction. So it's, yeah, like I said, it's a, it's a cost-saving measure, and, you know, looking at, you know, fourteen-month period to, to keep this rendered out and keep it, you know, lab-ready. Also, we're requesting suspension right now, even though it's not under construction, in order to help us move the large amount of sludge that we have stockpiled at the plant right now, too. So it's very, uh, it's, it's, with the water treatment plant solids, Dave and his staff have done very well in managing it, but, you know, there are times where it's overloaded, so to speak, so this will help them to clear out that area and that space and then get ready for construction when that goes over this.
Yeah, it's such bright sunny days right now.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's a good point. The winter time and, and when it's wet out, it's, doesn't dry as quick, so it freezes and, you know, we're stuck with that.
The, the issue of single sourcing this item, that is because this item is a similar model to what we've already agreed to purchase. So the permanent presses are on their way. They have one that's a very similar model sitting on a skid that they can deliver in a couple weeks for us to use. So not only would this allow us to clear the sludge from the site and prepare us for the large project, it would also allow staff to become familiar with the same unit that they're going to be using on a permanent basis. So that is the reason for the single-source aspect of this request.
And Chad, they're the only ones that can do that?
Yeah. Items like this, as far as the EKETON unit, which is what we ordered, or what we awarded for that volume press award, we're not going to get an EKETON unit from somebody out of Oklahoma.
Right.
There's one place to get it, it's through Baker &amp; Associates. My memo says to award it to Baker &amp; Associates Thursday, we found out the contract is actually through EKETON, which the legislation is written to reflect. But that's the difference between the legislation and the memo I did a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
But that's, that's the reason for the single-source aspect of this legislation.
Okay.
Motion for suspension?
Second.
Okay, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll on the resolution.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension.
My mistake, the memo wasn't there.
Moving on to item I, second read of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is Resolution Number 072-20, a resolution extending the provisions contained in Ordinance Number 021-18, and Resolution Number 086-19, wherein council imposed a temporary reduction and/or temporary elimination of a certain residential building permit fees, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is just second read on the housing pre-mortem that would be extended till December 31st of 2020.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, that will move on to third read. Item I2, Ordinance Number 074-20, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of two million five hundred thousand for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal water system by improving and rehabilitating the existing water treatment plant and related storage facilities, rehabilitating the elevated storage tanks, and acquiring and improving related interest in real property, together with all necessary and related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Thanks.
Sub move. Second.
Joel?
Hey, thank you. This is second read for the water bond issue. This is, this is a cost that we've been carrying via note, and that, this is for the stranded cost from the plant that didn't come to fruition, and the UV project that happened prior to the full-blown water treatment plant rehab.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to third read. Okay, item I3, Ordinance Number 075-20, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of three million nine hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of paying the cost of the construction of a municipal swimming pool with related facilities and appurtenances, including the demolition of existing facilities, together with all necessary and related appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. In your packet, there was a memo in here from Tony, and we took a real hard look at this. Just kind of seeing how the project is going. Going well, you know, for, for a construction project like this. You know, change orders are minimal. There've been a few small items here and there, but nothing to get excited about. We have, we've realized, you know, some cost savings along the way. You know, and, you know, we did go to rebid the building. We downsized it a little bit from what the original plans had it at. But, you know, if you go out there and look at the building, it's, you know, everything is still bigger than what, you know, what, what's out, was out there from before. It's still shaping up to, and I, and quite honest, I think we all agree that it's really right-sized, you know, for what it is, what we have here, what we have here, so. But, you know, there are some things that, you know, we could shore up on and do a little bit better and improve on. And one of the things that we, you know, just for example, some of the things that we omitted were like the climbing wall, you know, simulators, you know, we put the, the furniture in the Parks and Rec budget, you know, the furnishings and the equipment and the session stand and stuff, and the point-of-sale equipment, all of that got, you know, put into the budget. So, you know, we're going to have a building and then, you know, we'll have to furnish it, too. So, you know, with the way that, you know, the interest rates are right now, and I know February is a long way away in terms of, you know, timing for something like that, and it's really all market-driven. But, you know, we wanted to raise the point that originally, the levy that, that was passed generates just, just a fuzz under two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars per year. And, and we estimated that at a three-point-six-five percent interest rate, just to be, you know, conservative. You know, if, you know, we've had rates, you know, the water, the bond sale went at one-point-one-four percent. Sewer closed at about one-point-five, which is, you know, phenomenal. So, you know, looking at the forecast, you know, we think three-point-six-five is a little high as an estimate for that. So, you know, we wanted to at least bring it to council's attention to at least consider raising the, the bond ceiling amount that we have set at three-point-nine-five million. At, at raising it, you know, to an amount that's, you know, it's, all it is is raising the ceiling. Doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to come in, you know, that's going to be the number. Just raising the ceiling amount would, you know, we do have the opportunity to do this now and, and get all of these things. And it also helps save money for the actual Parks and Rec budget. And then, you know, maybe, maybe even repave the whole parking lot if, you know, we can fit that in, too, because that's not part of this project either, so. You know, we're also looking at, as an add-on to this, we'd like to extend the parking lot a little further out, have a little less green space, a little more hardscape on the, you know, up closer to where the new clubhouse portion is going to be at. So, you know, there's just, you know, even like the number nine cart path, you know, great, where does that end now? You know, maybe reconfiguring that, too, and just try to rework some things that, now that the, the space is clear, building's under construction, you got a good visual of where everything's going to be at, you know. It's something that you look on paper and you don't, you don't see it, but when you're actually out there and you're looking at the building going up and seeing all the, what, what the, what you have to work with, you kind of think of things a little differently. So, and that's, that's what, that's what this is all about. You know, if interest rates come in, you know, even if they come in at like two-point-five percent or, you know, two percent, you know, that's going to be a tremendous savings for us. And, you know, I think the, the objective here is to put a project together in, in its totality as best we can, as much as we can. But I, I think this would, this would, this would allow us to do that. So, you know, also looking at, I think Tony has a list here of items that, out of this. So, you know, the parking lot extension, I mentioned that, that's a big figure on him. The golf simulator. This is the, the pool deck furniture, clubhouse furniture and equipment. That's, these are all things that were from the Parks and Rec budget. And everything else, so we've got Lori, we've got a piece for that.
What's the additional engineering that would be needed?
You know, even for like the parking lot extension, there's some, there are some things that Peterman had to do or is going to have to do that, that we just don't have the in-house expertise. Chad, I don't want to speak for you, but it's just...
We don't have the bodies.
So they're taking care of some things that we just don't, we can't do internally, so it's, it's, uh, there is a, a little bit of trade-off there, so. Also, you know, I think part of the scope is that we want to eliminate that island, Tony, in the middle of the parking lot. You know, I mean, there's some other things that it's, it's just, the little things, kind of cleaning things up.
The engineering amount, is that what has been proposed to us from Peterman, or is that an estimate?
That is down from what was originally submitted from Peterman.
So they submitted something higher than this?
Substantially.
From, from the issues that we had with Peterman on this project, I'm kind of surprised that we would have to pay, pay anything in addition to, for this project.
They are the architect on record. It's, they're, they're reviewing all of these submittals, so everything gets reviewed by, and stamped by them.
Right. I understand what they, they're going to do, you know, I understand what they, they're going to do, you know, for the money, but there are some things that were not done correctly that cost us a little either time, money, and things now, and I would think that's a, a drop in the bucket compared to what we've already given them on this project where there were some issues and some costs.
You know, they owned it. They came in here and sat up here, and they, they redesigned.
How much money did they give us back when they owned it?
They, they didn't charge us.
They didn't charge us additional for the?
They wanted to, that, that's, and that's why that's substantially less. But we, they, they told us that here, in this room, we had a meeting with them when this all happened, and we said that, you know, they're going to see, they want to see this through to the end, and that we, we won't be paying them for that redesign of the building. But they did submit something to us asking to, for reconsideration of that.
So none of this will go toward that, that's?
That's, this is, this is for, I mean, Chad.
Yeah, no, this is for everything moving forward, this is not for anything prior to.
Yeah, the prior, that, that item that was submitted was, was denied, so.
It's about the same amount, I thought.
So we tell the taxpayers, we're going to get a building like this. This is too expensive for us, and now it's like this. And now we're telling them, now we're going to add all the guts to it, and their prices isn't going to go up. Right? We said we're going to build a big building, nope, it's too expensive, give it the building smaller. And now because rates are coming in, now we're going to add all the other stuff.
We've been adding other things.
So are we changing our mind again of what we're actually giving the taxpayers? Because they voted on a, a building one size, that's not what we're giving them. For whatever reason.
I, I don't.
Right?
I, no, I don't think so.
Yeah. I don't know if we, with the building plans on the levy, I mean, I don't know if it was, when I voted, I don't know if it said the building will be this size, so I don't want to say that's what they voted for.
Well, we, we, okay, we have changed the size, though.
Right.
How much did we shorten it by?
The building size?
Yes.
The one, you know what the square footages were from the original?
We, we've dropped the size, I would say probably twenty to twenty-five feet of length.
Okay.
The board should reduce the size.
Twenty-five by forty.
And on this list, I'm not sure if I want to dead out pieces that are not going to last as long as the debt will. For example, the pool deck furniture. I'm not sure it's going to last thirty years. The debt's thirty years, right, thirty-year bond, thirty-year note, right?
Twenty.
Twenty. Okay, find a piece of deck furniture that lasts twenty years. Ten, okay, twenty, probably not.
Yeah, totally get that, and the reason why that's in here is because, you know, trying to stay consistent with the message, the original message, which was anything that's pool cost related comes out of the levy. So if that's a, if there's a deviation there, that's okay, and, and there is, because it's in the, it's in the parks and rec budget. Because of that reason, you know, we thought, well, you know, it's going to be, I, you know, put a number on it, five to ten years life for deck furniture, I don't know what I.
I'm just kind of, it's just.
But you see what I mean?
I do.
Levy funds paying for this project, equipment and furniture being a part of that project. So it's, that was the message from, from the beginning, and I, you know, it's just more of a consistency item with that message.
Joel, one statement that you said that kind of stuck with me is, these are items that can complete the clubhouse, right? So I think our citizens voted on having a complete clubhouse and aqua center. So I understand that, Mr. Mary, you make a great point. Certain items, pool deck furniture, probably not worth the, the weight to carry. Maybe we could send those to the budget, but certain items, the parking lot, I think's a great idea. Some of the other items that we had to cut originally, if we could kind of revamp that list and come back with maybe adjusted recommendations that could carry that twenty-year, year term, I think would be a, a good mix, something to complete this aquatic center for our citizens, but also not carry five thousand dollars worth of pool deck furniture for twenty years, if that makes sense.
Just so you know, this was written in a way that this is a pool levy for the construction, so it's going to pay down the debt service, but anything that's comes in after that, let's say we don't hit the two eighty-six number per year on debt service, so there, there could be a, a difference. And let's say it's, it's below that two eighty-six on, on the debt service, so we'd be bringing in however much additional would go towards operating. You, you see what I mean? So it's, you don't want to, you don't, and I totally get, you don't want to pay interest for twenty years on something that's going to last five to ten, huh?
Right.
Five to ten. So that's.
I can't recall, what did we do in the budget for these items that we were going to roll into Parks and Rec? Did we just do a long-term capital plan for those items where we were just going to include it every year, or?
Well, those were, that was just for this year, and then see how it operates, see how much we need. You know, we don't have to buy everything all at once even, just kind of see what, you don't want to over purchase either.
Right.
It's kind of like trying to find that right balance, and, and, you know, I don't know without having the pool built and operating, you just, we just have a hard time gauging how many lounge chairs one needs. And then you see some of these other aquatic facilities, and they have lounge chairs everywhere that seemingly don't get used at all. So.
Right.
You know what I mean? Looks good, looks nice, but, you know, it's not functional, I, I don't know, just, that's kind of how I'm, I, I kind of view it. Tony, I don't know if you want to add anything to this?
Well, only thing I would like to add is that, I understand your point, Mayor, you, you definitely don't want, you know, I, I put that list together because those are some things that we will have to do that are outside of contracts. In order to get it complete. And of those things on that list, none of those are additional items that we put together when we first bid the project. You know, it was unfortunate the building first go around went so far over budget. You know, what that reason was, we're not real sure. What we do do, what we do know now is that talking to our contractor, building supplies costs are through loan. And that certainly could have had something to do with it, not sure. But I guess we're, we're not necessarily asking for an, an exact dollar amount, but what this would help us to do, if we do, if you do consider raising that ceiling, by the time February rolls around, there's going to be items I'm going to need to purchase, we're going to need to order them so that we stay on schedule. And yes, we do have many of the items, some of the equipment for the concession stand, some of the things that we need for the deck, some of the things we need for the pool, all those are in the budget. And we did that because, for a couple reasons. One, we, we just knew we needed to purchase them before February, and, and two, we wanted to make sure that money was there, because we're, we're not exactly one hundred percent sure as we move through this, the course of this construction, if we're going to run into some surprises. Thankfully now, knock on wood, things are going well, our change orders have been minimal, but we still have quite a ways to go. So we're just, I guess, looking for the ability if need be to have that money available to us if we have to make these additional purchases. The parking lot addition that, that we really need to do, I think is very important. Could we have caught that during the design process? I suppose we could have, but again, as Joel said, once you knock down the, the old clubhouse, then all of a sudden you see a lot of green space there that you really could use that parking for. And so we really believe that adding that in, back into the project, that wasn't in either of the two contracts, is, is really important. And if we have the ability to do that now, before we open the facilities, it's, to us, pretty, pretty important to do, so. Anyway, again, these are things that we did discuss, these aren't things that we want to throw in there. We understand that you don't want to borrow more money than you really need, and we certainly are not advocating that. But budget's pretty tight, and we just, if, if we can take advantage of some, some lower interest rates to kind of give us a little bit of free room on some of these things, certainly worth some consideration.
I really have no problem with majority of the list. I guess my heartburn comes with stuff that's not going to last the twenty years that we're going to have the debt.
Yeah.
And, and I think my rule would be if I can carry it out of there, or two people can carry it out of there without a crowbar, take it off the list.
Sure.
So cabinetry's fine, pool deck furniture, no, right? Parking lot extension, good, consistent equipment, we can find another place for that and not debt it for twenty years. And if we keep the, the same amount, the three nine, a lot better. It's, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, the, the, the request is to raise the ceiling, not necessarily, this is, this is the list and the final list, this is just, these are the options of things that we know that we use to, no, carve out the, the deck furniture and equipment and everything, even the parking lot extension could be, that could just be green space.
No, I think the extension's fine.
That's part of the, you see, but you see what I mean? It's, it's not that, it's not a complete project, it's that now we're, we're looking at adding some things that we feel would enhance what the original design.
And I'm saying I'm fine with that, except the stuff that is not going to last twenty years.
Yep.
Joel, what are we?
That's where my heartburn comes from.
Proposing to raise the ceiling to?
Well, at one point, we looked at, at four million or four point zero five, and, and, you know, we would obviously monitor where, where we think, you know, rates are coming in at, and try not to, you know, go, go too far with it. But I mean, comfortably, Tony, you, I mean, this is, this is a Parks and Rec budget item, even if it did go over, you know, the Parks and Rec budget could, you know, absorb that, whatever's, let's say rates came in at a surprise to us, you know, above three point six five, I don't know, just throwing a number up there, but, you know, that would be, you know, a little different story, but, you know, backstop wouldn't be in the Parks and Rec budget. But I guess when we, when we look at these items, and we see the opportunity that's in front of us right now with interest rates being low, raising that ceiling, I think, would afford us the opportunity to manage the project in a way that would enhance the end product in a way, in the most beneficial way. And that's the, I guess that's, that's the, that's the point I wanted to drag home, is that this is just raising the ceiling, taking advantage of an opportunity, and, and kind of shoring up some things, just shoring up items that, we, we didn't, we didn't foresee coming, or, or didn't see as a, as an opportunity to, to make it even better than, than what the original design was.
This is a good spot to be in, right? We have extra money to play with essentially, where we can give the citizens even more on what they voted on, so I think it's a good problem to have. My concern would be what is that dollar amount we're looking at raising it to? And two, are we staying within the parameters that the citizens voted for with the, the two eighty-six thousand a year roughly worth of income? So as long as we're there, I, I don't have a problem with it per se. Again, I think the citizens voted that they want this, so let's do it right. My two cents.
I'd say one more thing, because you, you bring up, it made me think of something else, and, and Tony, Tony brought this up, so if you want to elaborate on it, you know, we've got to, if it, if the rates come in so low, and, you know, we have the chance to do these other items, you know, we, we would be collecting more on the levy over a period of time. So, you know, if the interest rates do come in really low and stay, you know, the market stays kind of where it's at, or, you know, maybe goes up, even just, even if it goes up a little bit, you know, if it holds steady, you know, we could be bringing in, you know, tens of thousands of dollars into the, into this for the pool, like I said, going to use for operating. So I guess that's the, one of the points is that, I guess that's the opportunity side.
Or we pay it off sooner and, and, and kill the levy sooner.
Yep, good.
Right?
Depends on what the, you know, what we're allowed to do, and the, and the bond sales, and I don't know if there's an early penalty for paying it off sooner or not, but.
Great point, Jason.
Yeah, I like this. I'm, I'm glad you guys took the time, and Tony and I talked the other day, and I, I think it's great to, especially the, the parking lot addition. I, that was, that was one of the things I thought about and some concerns citizens had is, hey, that's going to be great, we're going to have a lot more people, where are they going to park? I know that, that this isn't going to solve it, but it's actually, it's going to help some, and we're going to have a new facility there, a new building, new pool, and, and the parking lot is, you know, deteriorating. So if we have the money in the, within the levy, like Ross just said, and, and that's what the people voted on, and let's, let's make it look nice, stay in the parameters where we need to be.
But not just look for things to spend.
Correct. Yep.
Well, this is just for the parking lot extension, not for re, resurfacing? Is that correct, Chad? What would the, and that's not on here, what would the resurfacing cost be?
I don't know.
Throw a number at it, probably an additional seventy-five thousand. Sixty to seventy-five.
Well, if you take everything off the list and pull deck furniture down, there's just seventy-five thousand to redo the whole parking lot.
My biggest concern is if we have more change orders.
I understand, right, yeah.
There's not much pushing there. Already found a wall that was part of the old pool, I was surprised.
The, the old, old pool?
The old pool that was removed in the seventies did not get removed.
Right. Jason said it's going to be there.
Yeah, so that's my concern, but I can't put a dollar amount to that for you. And five percent of four million dollars, that's a chunk of money, that's a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know.
So this engineering costs twenty-two thousand five hundred, and that is for, would that be covering that parking lot extension?
I think I can get that to cover the engineering for that and some other services I need during the project as far as reviews and such. They've been pretty good to work with considering the situation. I think for that twenty-two five, we could get that taken care of. I think for that 22,500, we could get that taken care of.
Is that typically percent-wise, so if it's going to cost 75,000 to do the extension, it's 22,000 in engineering, is that in line with how it normally goes, or?
It did also include some reviews during construction, some of the items I'm not qualified to review. If it has anything to do with a building, I'm not qualified. I'm more qualified for the pavement site than I am for anything that that architect had a piece of. And so there was a lot of that was included in that number.
So it's not just for?
It's not just the design of the parking lot. It also includes, we generally call it engineering during construction. It's assistance that we either don't have the personnel or the staff availability to cover. It was a combination of both of those, and I think that's why we were able to get that number down. I'm trying to do more of that in-house as possible, but for some of it, I don't have an architectural license.
Thank you.
Kelly, can I put you on the spot and ask your opinion?
Ross, did you ask me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, all right. I think that Joel and Tony and Chad have done a nice job not building buildings. I think no one expected the interest rates to be as low as they're going to be. Hopefully it'll stick for February. I think that if we want to give our citizens the best pool that we can give them and the interest rates stay low, then, and stay within that levy amount, then we should try to look to do it.
Have any other questions or comments?
So you want to change, which means we change the ordinance?
Correct, yes.
But we don't know we're changing it to?
An amendment, requested amendment from 3.95 to...
To a number we don't know?
Kelly's not here to kick me right now, so if I said 4.1, that's the ceiling.
That's the ceiling.
And it doesn't have to be 4.1. You know what I mean? It's just, you know, figuring out the, what these items are. You know, as we move forward, we could even, you know, set the ceiling at 4.1 and then go, you know, to Parks and Rec Committee or the Board or whoever, kind of review these final items and just kind of, you know, solidify that piece of it. You know what I mean? Just have more conversation, more dialogue about, you know, what else to, how to manage that ceiling.
If we pass second read of the legislation as it stands, can we amend it on third read?
Goes back to second.
Goes back to second. If we were to do that by next council meeting, could we have some concrete numbers and dollar amounts in place?
No, because we won't know the debt. The debt is going until February.
Got you, ma'am.
We can have estimates on what would be, you know, what we would propose to have in...
If it were 2.5?
Yeah.
Et cetera, okay.
That's a little, you know, a little easier to, you know, put together the estimates and then...
I think I would like to see that first before we change it as is.
There's, you know, we're going to February, so I don't, I think there's another round, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's, or Billy, this isn't the final legislation needed for the, for the bond, is it? Or is it?
But we have to pay off the note, which is due February 24th, so we have to go to, we have to sell it in the middle of February to be able to pay off the note at that point. Once we pass this, once council passes this, then they would start finalizing the size, just like the sewer and water refunding, we could do a not to exceed amount. That doesn't mean that we would have to go up to that point. Like Joel said, it just gives a room of cushion for that amount. And then once you guys decide on what it could be, then it could be sized in January. But the not to exceed amount, we can't go over that principal amount once you pass the ordinance without coming back and doing another one. But then we would be too late to be able to pay off the note.
So if we did the opposite way, here's saying, Ross, if we amended it now to the 4.1, then we can still gather some information to what it's looking like, and we can always, if we needed to amend it then, because everything's pointing towards the interest rate being quite a bit lower than 3.65, then as long as we're not going over what the voters voted on, I don't see why, what would hold it back from doing that.
Can I interrupt with a point of clarification?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. For legislation that's on third read and amended, it goes back to second read. If it's on second read and amended, it would come to a third?
I have to say it twice. Pardon me?
I have to say it twice.
Okay, so if we...
So I understand that, or should I?
No, you're fine. Thank you, Billy. Yes, we got it.
If we amended it today, then it's still going to go to third read as, with the amended.
Correct. That's correct.
And then if it's on third read and we decide we wanted to amend it, it's going to go back to second again. Got it.
That is correct as well. Obviously, council can suspend certain rules, that being one of them.
Right. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So I think I would like to see two reads of the amended legislation personally.
Does that put us in a bind with the February deal?
February 25th.
It goes back to two reads or it goes back to the second read on the second meeting in January? And then the third reading would be the first meeting in February? Am I following this right?
No, we can amend it tonight.
Yeah, amend it and then vote it.
First one in January, third one, second one in January, on a suspension with emergency.
But if you amend it again the next time?
Yeah, if you amend it again, then you're, then you get it back.
Right.
Unless we, yeah.
If council decided to amend it tonight to a certain dollar amount, and then Joel and staff could bring back the not to exceed what we would need, then you wouldn't have to amend it again, you would just give direction of, here's the maximum amount that you can do, and it wouldn't matter if the ordinance said a higher amount, because it would be the maximum principle, just like the water and sewer refunding.
So if we make the ceiling at 4.1 right now, and then the numbers come up that don't support that, then we're just going to do the note for lower than the 4.1?
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
I'll second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on the amendment.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the ordinance? Hearing none. Rox, please call the roll on the ordinance with the amendment.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Okay, that will be moving on to third read.
So we're going to get one more read? We're not going to get three reads?
Correct. That we just, yeah, it just had one now, the second one. Okay, moving on to item I-4, ordinance number 067-20, an ordinance establishing a new position classification pay plan for employees of the city of Napoleon, Ohio for the year 2021, repealing ordinance number 088-19 and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
Requesting second read on the pay ordinance.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Since we're in this new year already, do we need to pass this with suspension?
Um, I think that...
Is there a retroactive clause in the...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, is a retroactive clause.
Then we're good.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to third read. Item J, third read of ordinances and resolutions. J1 is resolution number 062-20, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds and authorizing a department director to take bids on certain projects, services, equipment, materials, or supplies without the requirement for additional legislation to do so in the year 2021, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So?
Motion? Second.
Hey, Rox, please call, I'm sorry. Come on in, go. So, nothing? You sure? I wasn't trying to rush you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Item J2, resolution number 063-20, a resolution authorizing expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 in and for the year 2021 as it relates to reoccurring costs associated with the operation of the city for payment of expenses and for purchases associated with vendors utilized by multiple departments within the city, elimination of necessity of competitive bidding in and for the year 2021 as it relates to certain transactions, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Joel?
Nothing new there.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J3, ordinance number 064-20, an ordinance establishing the appropriation measure budget of the city of Napoleon, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
Kelly, anything new on this one?
Nothing new to add.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J4, resolution number 065-20, a resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances from respective funds to other funds per section 5705.14 ORC on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2021, listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion? Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. Nothing new to add on this one either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J5, ordinance number 066-20, an ordinance amending the allocation of funds as found in Sections 193.11 and 194.13 of the codified ordinances of the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
This is just the tech split ordinance, request a third read, constantly do that.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J6, resolution number 068-20, a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Community Improvement Corporation of Henry County, Ohio, in and for the year 2021, and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Nothing new there.
Any questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. J7, ordinance number 069-20, an ordinance appropriating the expenses incurred, including wages, salaries, and fringe benefits of the mayor, council, and various other departments of the city of Napoleon, which are not otherwise directed, charged, directly charged to special and/or capital projects among various accounts effective January 1st, 2021, amending ordinance numbers 104-09 and 087-19, and declaring an emergency.
Motion?
Second.
Nothing new there.
Are you sure? All right. Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item K, Good of the City. K1, discussion on action approval of power supply cost adjustment factor for December 2020 as power supply cost adjustment three-month average factor 0.02012 and JV2 0.031163. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is a, this is one for the October usage, and right now, what we're seeing is, you know, October, November is low usage. With low usage, you know, causes our cost adjustment factor to wane quickly, so we're anticipating that with also a mild November, that we're going to see this, the rate go up sometime close to, you know, kind of how it was in the summer a little bit, but, you know, up in that range. But that's just because the usage went so low with the mild temperatures that it's just kind of, you know, we're stuck in these contracts for our purchase of power with the different projects that we're in, you know, we're just having the usage, so it does wind up hurting us. Thankfully, next year, we will be... Thankfully, next year, we won't be, you know, long on power like we talked about, starting in the billing month of March, uh, we should see, you know, we'll start the, you know, it's down by about eight percent, so we saw that in the budget too, but just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, usage's been down, and I think this was the seventh most mild November that we've had on record, so it has an impact, that's, that's the impact that I have. That's all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions on the, on the power bill.
So I would assume that the, the mild temperatures, um, it's, and the increase in the, um, the adjustment factor, still gonna be lower rates, most likely, bills that people are gonna be paying because they just didn't use...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, this increase doesn't offset what, from not using much.
Right, yeah, if you, if they're, if everybody's using less, they're not paying as much, it's just that the rates are, you know...
Using less at a little bit higher rate?
Yeah. Yep, that's it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item K two, discussion on action, PC twenty dash one five subdivision replat of lot D in Hograves Plat number two. Are you, sir?
It can be. This is just the continuation of the subplatting of Hograves Plat number two by the current owner, Richard Leslie, continuing to cut, uh, pieces into, uh, to, to smaller to resell. So you can see, he took that big chunk and he made it from one into three pieces, so basically what he did, planning commission approved unanimously to allow this to continue. And we're fairly certain this is the last replating of this section of property.
Reentrance to the, um, yardway site is, right here, so this is Oakwood, you see the cursor?
Mm-hmm.
This is by a different parcel entrance, I believe it's right here, maybe just a little softer now.
The tent is still back there, but it hasn't been put up.
Yeah.
It's just laying on the ground.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Maybe it's somebody's doghouse when they get down to have a place to sleep.
Deer could get out of the weather.
Right. Okay, um, anybody have any questions or comments about this? Will entertain a motion to accept?
Motion?
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Item K three, discussion on action on sewer and water rates recommendation. Joel?
Thank you, um, I was gonna take a little time with this.
I'm gonna set the timer here.
You know, we had John Courtney and Scott, his associate, Courtney and Associates, on the, on the, uh, at the Board of Public Affairs and, and Water and Sewer Committee meeting last week. And, uh, you know, as we normally do, um, Courtney puts together a presentation based on what information that we provide to them, and, uh, I'm gonna go through the presentation on the sewer site first. And it shouldn't take too long, but jump in if you have any questions. So, if you recall, Courtney did a sewer rate study for us in 2017, and I do have this, this was part of the packet as well, I have it in the end, so I'll go through the presentation, get to that, I'll go over the ten-year history of sewer rate, sewer rate increases for the city of Napoleon, and then, uh, you know, I got a little commentary and then, you know, answer any questions. So, since 2016, sewer sales have dropped about eleven percent. 2016, we lost B and B molded plastics, if you recall that, that's right around that timeframe, so when they left, uh, that, they were, they were a big user, and, uh, that was that. What he had projected for the rehab debt service was, is actually down to what we have at now, so about thirty-seven thousand a year. O and M also decreased by about $12,000 a year, um, that's just good management. I don't know what else to tell you guys. And the capital, the biggest item is obviously the, the capital outlay decreased by a million dollars a year. That was because of the renegotiation of the long-term control. So where we were just, you know, we're just stacking projects atop of each other, spending a lot of money on each one of them, that's obviously weighed down now, we refocused everything to, um, the things that were breaking down, uh, plant and the, and the pump stations that were aging out, so bigger ticket items that we felt were more important to me just at the time, so basically what he does is he projects the sewer sales, uh, projects the revenues at the current rates, and then projects the revenue requirement to determine the overall adjustment. So, here's the, by, by customer class, uh, here's the, the total sales. Every class actually dropped, residential, commercial, industrial. The industrial, obviously the biggest one was that, uh, B and B molded plastics, but, you know, another factor into this, you see all of them have dropped, and really, it's, that's a, I think that's a factor of people being more conscious and more efficient with their usage in appliances, flushing, and washing, and things like that, so that's the, that's the, that's the, uh, the issue there. So, that also reflects, because sewer sales are based on, so I don't know if Molly or Ross are familiar, but sewer sales are based on water usage, unless they have a sewer meter separate, which is, I don't know how many sewer meters we have, any? I don't think we have any, so. Now, now we factor in what sales we have, we have a growth in sales, uh, predicting about a point five percent growth per year, uh, in sales in residential. Just to be conservative, no growth in sales in commercial. Just because, you know, yes, we have the, a, a new eye doctor office being built at the corner of Independence and Oakwood, and yes, we have, uh, you know, slated, uh, a, a main stop over by the, by where the, uh, next to the Taco Bell, where the stop and go was gonna go, but, you know, we still saw that reduction in sales since 2016, so it's kinda like, uh, I feel like that's kind of the trade-off because you just don't know. You know, you don't wanna be over-optimistic on what, what setting rates, because the last thing you wanna do is full strength. Six percent industrial growth in 2021 alone, uh, that's to come for Love's. Uh, Love's opened up, and, and, and what he did was take, looked at the other truck stops, saw what their usages were, and then just kinda put a number together and plugged it in here just for 2021. Interdepartmental, that's just between different departments, that's just a category. Here's a sewer sales chart, uh, by unit per class. So then he takes this, uh, based on the, like, based on the increases, so he goes out to 2024. Then you take the rates, okay, and this is like the all-in rate. Then you multiply it out by, by the units that, you know, your estimated sales are to give you an amount of what your, uh, projected revenues are at. Here's the projected revenue requirements page, very important here, um, this determines how much we need. So, for personnel, we factored in a two point two five percent increase per year. Health insurance, uh, we did a three point five percent per year. Everything else is on three percent projected, uh, expenses increases. And then you'll see here the debt service, all the different debt service pieces, but the biggest one being the wastewater rebuild. You know, half payment projected here in 2023, and then 2024, full payments of what, uh, that, uh, project would be at point seven percent is what the interest rate would be at now, so. You know, we're, we're, what we're hoping that we can do is actually change this 2023 debt number. If the project goes out a little further, that payment wouldn't start until, well, the full payment wouldn't start until 2024, so that helps give a little bit of cushion to the center. But it doesn't, doesn't change the, the, the recommendation. So, here's where we get into, you know, adding your expenses, adding your revenues, and then determining what, per given year, what your short calls or, or additions would be. So, right now, 2021, we're projecting a forty-one point five percent over, uh, over collection, I'd say, but part of that, the biggest part of that is because we cash flowed some of the projects. The value presses, uh, you know, that's, that's gonna come back, so when we, when we go to debt on that through OWDA, we'll get that back, that'll go right back into the fund balance. 2022, that is what, what a more accurate depiction would be of, um, you know, the revenues versus expenditures, so we're still net ahead. In the end, 2022, then 2023, it drops down because we have that first debt payment, and then 2024, then we're, we see, that's where we see that, uh, revenue requirement jump up, so, um, that's at about twelve percent, so that's the, uh, that's, that's all because of the, the wastewater plant rehab. So, puts together conclusions, uh, need to get up to twelve percent by 2024. Revenue requirement, um, so the recommendation is three percent per year over the next forty years. And, and quite frankly, um, for everything that we're doing, two pump stations and a wastewater plant rehab, three percent per year over four years is, uh, is, is actually, uh, really good, given the circumstances that we're faced. It's just, uh, you know, EPA required projects are causing us to to spend money and, and, and maintain the system. But, you know, we're maintaining things that we need to maintain anyway. The wastewater plant, we have a mothball digester sitting in the, inside the bike. We have outdated equipment, uh, you know, it's, it's well past its useful life. I think we've talked about a lot of different facilities that you have in your, part of your operation that are just, you know, outright...
Inadequate.
Eh, yeah, yeah, it's, it, it's functioning, uh, but not the way that, you know, current water quality standards are where, where, where we're supposed to be at, I mean, the grip facility alone is just, and the configuration of the, of the whole plant, however, that kinda comes in at different, from different entry points is really, um, as part of the rehab, that's, that's, that's also gonna be a case, so it's, it's a pretty, um, not only that, but the, but the press equipment is just, it's, it's, uh, it's tough to maintain it, I think that's...
It's obsolete.
Absolute, it really is. They're, they're keeping it together, um, until we get to this point, but, you know, we got the presses order, and, uh, we can swap out shoreups and things inside the buildings and then, uh, take care of the equipment. These are big capital items, so. Overall, uh, we did a update for the Water and Sewer Committee, I wasn't gonna go through that today, um, but, um, overall, um, you know, you'll, you'll see on here, there's a, there's an item for Jones and Henry here, Jones and Henry's, but doing a good job of, of, of value engineering a lot of things for us, uh, so that we can keep our, our costs, uh, down, down to a minimum, because it's, you know, cost goes directly into rates. So, we wanna make sure we're maximizing the project as much as we can while, while minimizing as much as we can the impacts to the ratepayers. So, um, that's the, that's the, uh, update on the sewer rate study. So, so why I say, um, that this is better than, than I think we had anticipated. I'm gonna scroll down here, now, a lot of this that was in your packet is the, uh, is the modeling sheets. I don't know if you wanted to go over any of those, or if you have questions on them, um, but the old sewer rate model that was done in 2017, I'm just gonna go right now and skip down to the end. The recommendation was five percent per year, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. I'll get back on the rate history in just a moment, but, um, trying to find that, uh, page that has the revenue requirements, here it is. It's up a little ways, so. I mean, they were, he was looking at a forty percent increase over... Here it is. At the time, you can see where it was going up forty percent in 2023. Now we're looking at twelve percent in 2024. So, um, you know, we've come a long way, that was just with the information we had at the time. We had feel that, uh, you know, I mean, that's, that's just something that ratepayers are gonna have a hard time tolerating. It really is, so we, we, uh, you know, renegotiating long-term control plan, managing our budgets a little tighter, I think, uh, has, has helped tremendously in, in, um, you know, damaging our utility, so. A, you know, three percent per year is more, more of a standard. I mean, there are some communities that just do three percent per year automatically, or more, or less. Some just wanna review every, every, uh, you know, every few years. So, it just depends on, on what circumstances we're dealing with, but, you know, the bottom line is, it's, it's better than what it was three years ago, and, um, it just, uh, you know, I said three percent a year is, is really, uh, it's a standardized, uh, rate increase for, for utility that, of a water and sewer utility, not necessarily like an electric utility. Electric utility even had to play the markets a little more, and, you know, like us who are in contracts for power, purchasing, purchasing power and things like that, so. Oh, lastly, let me get into, uh, what we've done over the past several years. So, this was also in, in the packet, uh, but you see that we did, uh, you know, five, so starting in, this is 2012. So, 2012, we went five percent increase. 2013, zero. 2014 was a six percent, 2015 was an eight percent, uh, 2016 was a ten percent. So, let's fast forward, 2017 was a zero, 2018 was a zero, 2019, just the commodity charge went up nine point six, but that was council approved, a five percent. So, a five percent revenue requirement increase that was just applied to the rate, not the, not the, uh, minimum. So, or else these would be, these both would be five percent, so effectively it was five percent. And then 2020 was zero. So, over the past four years, it's been just one five percent, and that's the recommendation. And the recommendation was made by the Board of Public Affairs to go, uh, to, to accept the recommendation as it is from, from Courtney and Associates, which was three, 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 over the next four years. So, other than that, I will point out one other thing, you know, what could we do to minimize rate impacts while still make, effectively managing our system? Chad put together, uh, you know, a... Chad put together, you know, kind of a list of projects, our capital list. You know, you've looked at here over how his man Heine is factored in. So, all of these are actually factored into the rates here. But this has actually been scaled down. Some of the projects were pushed, you know, pushed back or omitted over at least for the next four years. So, you know, we do everything we can to minimize, like I said, minimize the impacts to the ratepayers. So, it's direct project costs and managing our operational budgets effectively. You know, I think both in operations and that wastewater treatment plant, that's been done very well. So, you know, it's always the, what could we be doing better on the sewer side? I think we're doing really well. I really do. I think we're doing a great job of managing that utility. So, you know, again, if it wasn't for the EPA required projects from the long-term control plan, we might not be having this conversation.
Joel, there were some conflicting numbers in the committee when asked about the average residential consumer, how much this 3% would impact. Have we nailed down numbers on that?
We did. And Kelly, did you want to answer that, Kelly?
On the sewer side, the 3% from the beginning of 2021 to 2024 would be like a 5.5 to 6% or it starts at about a $2.04, $2.04 per month, per 6 CCF, and it goes up from there a little bit each year.
So, is it 3% or not?
The revenue is 3%, but like Joel said, he showed you that when it was 5%, it was really 9.64% for the rates. So, it's just a matter of the calculation for it.
You can apply it either way. You can apply it directly to the commodity or both the commodity and the base rate. What we refer to as the minimum. I'll back up to right here. So, that's why there's two, there are two numbers here, two columns. This one is the actual usage of the commodity. This one is the base charge.
Those numbers that I just talked about was only on the commodity charge, not its
Let's just pretend that I'm ignorant. Can you explain the difference to me between the commodity charge and the base?
Yes. Commodity is your actual usage.
Okay.
So, what you actually use, you get charged on that per unit that you use. The base rate is what you pay every month. So, that shows up as a line item. As long as your service is there and available, we have to accommodate for that usage or potential usage, as you'd say. So, like, you know, in the water world, we refer to it as a capacity charge. And if you have that service there, we have to account for that you are going to be using something. In other words, if they're not using it, using or flushing anything down, we still have to pay for the pipes that are in the ground that are depreciating or otherwise need to be replaced at some point or fixed or whatever. You see what I mean?
Okay.
So, I'd say, I think the majority of every utility has some sort of a base rate or capacity rate.
So, Kelly, Kelly, on the numbers you provided, on the commodity cost, it would just show a 3% increase instead of 6 or whatever number?
Those were just estimates using the amount of average. And then, like Joel said, the recommendation from Courtney is to increase the revenue by 3%, but to get that 3% on the commodity charge only, it would be about a 5.5% for 2020. It goes up to 6% for 2024. So, the average increase per bill would be about $2.04 to about $2.21, and that's all
So, if we plug 3% in on the base rate, is that going to give us the same dollar amount? It's just a different way of doing math?
Yes. Theoretically, yes. I mean, we'll have to run it to make sure that everything matches up. I don't want to speak for anybody that would calculate it, but yes.
Okay.
Kind of like how these were done in these previous years. Council had approved, you know, a 6%, 8%, 10%.
So, an estimate 3% increase on the base rate would equate to roughly an average of $2.04 for the average residential consumer?
Yeah, thereabouts. Again, on a six-unit user, that's what we always use as the base of a six-unit user as the average. So, that goes up and down.
Would we be in any different situation if we had had a minimum increase every year rather than taking the zeros some years?
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, absolutely. It catches up. This, the cost of water and sewer utilities always goes up. It's just because it's the nature of the expenses, what you collect, and then the maintenance of it. It's just maintenance. And then you get into EPA requirements. And that throws everything off because, you know, you're forced to, especially like a city like Napoleon, an older city that has CSOs and SSOs, forced to, by the EPA, under finance and orders. It's a violation of their law. So, other communities that fought it are in the consent decree, federal consent decrees. So, they're federally obligated by law to fix those issues over a period of time, their law control. And that's right into their permit. At the time, just as a refresher recap for everybody, I don't know if you've heard this yet or you've heard this either, but I believe everybody else has. The EPA 12, 14 years ago, 15 years ago now?
2028.
15 years ago.
Could you be more specific?
I had a liberty. They mandated this on all the communities that have CSOs, said, you have to fix this. You can't have these overflows here. You have to minimize it. And the city of Napoleon opted to, okay, we agree, we'll do it. Other communities, I believe the finance, Antioch as two examples, said, no, we're going to fight it. And they fought it and lost. And then they were federally ordered by a consent decree to fix their CSO issues to a certain level. And the thought process at the time was, well, we're going to do this now, and since they're forcing us to do it, everybody else is going to catch up to us eventually. 15 years later, nobody's caught up to us because we're ahead of everybody else, but we're winding down where I think other people still have projects that are out there and that are going to. So, that's kind of the brief history of the regulatory side of sewer, sewer. Did that, did I even answer your question?
Yeah, you did. Yeah. I just wondered because, I mean, that is, that goes into the management of it also. But, and I know we've talked about it and you basically just outlined it, but I, I'm appreciative. I think we're all appreciative that this could be a lot worse because this rehab needs to be done no matter what. And it could be a much greater increase than the 3%. So, I think renegotiating was a good idea and everything else that you all have done to get us to this point. Nobody likes an increase, but in the end, I think, well, we'll be good. Keep it like that.
Can I interrupt real fast?
Yes, sir.
So, you'll need to direct me to draft changes. Our water and sewer rates are codified, obviously, and they are expressed in rate amounts for both water and sewer and not in percentages. So, I will need exact rate amounts for both of those in order to complete the legislation.
Which we do not have today, correct?
No, I think if, you know, in years past, you did a, like a, if you accepted the recommendation, it would have been 3% on the revenue requirement and direct ability to draft that legislation. And then I think Kelly has that number for the, what it would be just for the commodity. But it would be that 3%, whatever that, if it's applied just to the commodity, it'd be a 3% of the revenue requirement. So, in years past, last time council passed a 5% rate increase, I believe it was 2019. So, it was 2018, and it happened in 2019 to the fact. If you recall that. But that's why you see reflected up here, it's 9.64%. I mean, unless you, I mean, what, you know, the recommendation is for 3, 3, 3, and 3 in the Board of Public Affairs, which would then be applied going through the reading process, we proposed that it take effect or the billing cycle change and then every first of the year thereafter, so the January billing month thereafter.
So, Billy, how would you word the motion to draft legislation?
So, I mean, just a general, the Director of Law, Director of Draft, the changes recommended by the City Manager and the Finance Director regarding the water and sewer rate increase?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Billy.
I was wondering who's going to fill their voice. Not Lori's first in comes.
I'll second.
Hey, any questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item K4, discussion action on recommendation of Water and Sewer Committee to amend codified ordinance section 925.08, placement of containers.
Wait, did, I think we had one.
We had to do a part of.
So close.
Just want to go faster.
How about if we do a recess first? Five-minute recess, is that all right?
Don't include that in the minutes.
I'm not, no, I'm not. Hopefully, we're all.
Five minutes.
No, I am.
All right, we're back.
Okay, resume where we left off.
All right. Let me go back to share content. All right, and let's go down to the water rate piece. Turn this up. Okay, everybody see that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Courtney did come in in 2018 and kind of did a revised update to the what was done in 2016 to, back then for the water plant rehab, it was 10, 10, and 10 for 17, 18, and 19. We had zero for 2020. So, since 2018, he has us at a 12% drop since 2017 in sales, water treatment plan, rehab, debt service, from what he had predicted for before, actually decreased by about $136,000 per year. OANM expenses increased by about $105 per year. We, majority of that is due to bigger building space, heating and cooling, plus the electric usage, very, very big electric user in those numbers. So, that's the increase on that. And that, and not enough to offset the chemical costs. So, chemical costs did go down, but not by as much as what the electric rates would help make these, because we still have chemical costs, it's not like it just went away. And then we had a capital outlay decrease of about $10,000 per year. Same thing, project your sales, project your revenues at the current rates, figure out what the requirement is, and then determine what an overall adjustment you can do. Here's the customer classes. I always find this interesting, customer classes from 2017 to 2019, sales dropped in residential, smaller numbers than the bigger ones on the industrial side. Wholesale, now, in the water rates, wholesale, we have to factor into which of the satellite contract we use. So, overall, sales were down by about 12% total. Same thing in projected growth on the industrial side, we have, because water and sewer are a little different, I don't know how much they amount to in percentages, so industrial sales from 5% due to Love's opening up just for 2021 only.
How is Love's an industry, not a commercial?
Because of the, because of the amount of usage.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's categorical. Residential, then, you know, 5% a year, no growth. So, on the wholesale side, we show no growth in sales, also a loss of sales to Liberty Center and McClure. Put a date on it, effective July 1st, 2023. Let's just give us a date to measure off of. Same thing, you know, this is what we anticipate water sales to be per year in all the different classes. And then, you know, we see the wholesale side drop significantly, 2023 and then 2024. Overall, Liberty Center and McClure account for about 16% of the total consumption of the water system.
Joel, will we see an increase in the wholesale rate for 2021, 2022 over 19, 18, 17 due to Liberty Center?
When you say rate, you mean in the rate recommendation? Or do you mean in the rate for?
Since they didn't sign another contract with us, wouldn't that make a change?
That is, that is factored in.
It is factored.
It is factored in.
Okay.
So, just, just for the Liberty Center, because that's the one that's affected, since they didn't renew a contract with us, they are now paying the outside rate.
Right.
So, these are your, you know, roundabout rates, all in, factoring in the, all the, you know, capacity charge and, you know, all the base charges plus the commodity charge. And then this one, same as before, just estimating what the rev, projecting what the revenues would come in at based on these rates. And then, zoom in on this one, because I think it always needs a little bit of care here. And then same thing with personnel, though, is that the 2.25% factored in increases, 3.5% in healthcare. 3.5% in healthcare, materials and supplies, 3%. And then the debt services are what they are. And then this is the determination for revenue requirements going over the next four years. So overall, you see that increase in 2023 and then in 2024, a jump. And that's directly related to, direct correlation of
The wholesale.
Loss of wholesale customers, yeah.
So we could offset that if we could get some big users in?
Yep, I was gonna get into that, but you're right. Hold that thought. So, this is, you know, obviously, it's not sufficient to meet the needs of the near-term revenues, so approximately 30% needed to meet the 2024 projections. Hence the reason why for the 7%, recommendation of 7% per year over the next four years. If you take out the loss of the wholesale customers, we would be at about a 3% per year, just like the sewer side. Which is pretty, again, go back to, pretty, pretty standard for utilities. On the sewer side, we've had less increases over the last few years. The water side did have some pretty big increases, but those were directly put towards, you know, the need for, for the water treatment plant rehab. Again, that was, that was another plant that was, had equipment that was beyond its useful life. I know Jeff Wies is on the line, he can attest to that, he's been there enough years to be working in the old plant and then in, now with the new plant, what a difference. I think everybody sees it, the water quality, too. So, you know, yeah, like I said, if it wasn't for the loss of the wholesale or the satellite communities, we'd probably be looking at a, you know, 3% per year, but factor in the, the 16% loss in total sales. We did factor in less water being made, but your fixed asset costs are still there, your debt service for your water plant's still there. So that still has to be spread out over a smaller number of people. That's what it comes down to. Yeah, let me go back up to that other sheet here to kind of show that where, whereas it materials and supplies, you see the 2021, 2022 goes up, then 2023 and 2024, see the drops here. Then it starts to percentage-wise start to triple back up. So. So you're right, I think on both water and sewer, we, I think it's, I think it's fair to estimate conservatively on the growth anticipated for it. Because you can't, you don't want to undershoot your rates and then go back and say, oh, well, we gotta raise it again. That's my opinion, however you want to handle it, you can handle it that way. But there's one way to stop this from continuing and occurring is, is to, is to add rooftops. It's what it is. Adding rooftops and adding users makes a big difference. And we're seeing that, you know. Just one Love's travel stop adds 5% to the water, 6% to the sewer. So you get growth like that in a continuous basis, it's, it adds up and, and it helps, it just helps with the overall expenses of running a utility. That's a good question, good point. Other than that, I think the other item was the history. Look at the history here. So water rates are a little different, because they, they factor in only the commodity charges. The capacity charges haven't increased over any of the years. They just, everything's been applied to the commodity charge. So basically, we have 2012, or basically residential, it was 13, in 2012, it was 13.5%, and 9% for commercial, and then the 29.4% for industrial, pretty, pretty sizable. 6.5, 4.8, 12.1. 2013. And you get into, what would be the, you know, basically, what a 3% per year would look like? Something like this. I'm not saying that this is what this would be, I'm just saying that judging by what was, what was past, this was actually probably a 2% per year for 2014, 15, and 16. Out of revenue requirement. Just plugging something in every year. And then, this was for the water plant rehab. This was for revenue requirement, if you recall, it was 10, 10, and 10. Well, on the commodity rates, it was roughly 12 and a half each year. The overtake, so. That's that's the short history. That's, that's, that's all I have for, for water. The actual presentation, please, so. I really don't have any other commentary, other than, you know, I feel like that we did everything that we possibly could to, to hang on to the other satellite communities as, as customers, so far as even offering them a lower rate than what they were offered by the, by the Northwestern Water and Sewer District. But they opted out, so. We're just anticipating that they're not going to be here at that.
Thank you all.
I know the rate today says 7. What does the math look like if we want to do 5? My issue is, if we do 7, are we gonna sell less? Because it's the first, that's the first slide, we keep selling less, prices go up, we sell less. So the question is, if we increase less, do we sell more? And I'm not sure how you model that.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
No matter what, it's still going up.
I understand, yeah.
So we'll probably sell less. With the technology inefficiencies that have come out in the previous years, too, it's hard to judge that, I'm sure.
It's just, it's a big, big number to me, 7% seems to be.
Yeah.
One thing to note, we did look at, you know, Courtney always likes to take a look at the actual budget, rather than look at the historic actuals. And what we did in this one was we looked at historic actuals and tried to project what we think our expenses will be. Just so, you know, if you go based on just what the budget is, but knowing that, you know, we don't spend down the budget every year, and haven't since, you know, our role. Just to, again, minimize the impact to the rate payers as much as we can.
Right.
It's, it's pretty, pretty ground down. And, you know, same, you can see with the capital projects, you know, this is, this was ground down to to the, what, you know, what it is that we've spent historically, you know, on, on water capital out of the distribution system. I think the plant is pretty well optimized. You heard from Jeff Wies during the budget hearing that, and he is on the line, if you've got any questions for him, but he's, he's got, you know, he's had a really dry year, and he's had a really wet year, so he's got to kind of gauge seasonally what can happen at any given, any given time or year. So I think that plant operations are pretty well optimized at this point. You can always adjust things here and there. One thing that was brought up in the Water and Sewer Committee and the Board of Public Affairs meeting was that we do have a contract with Waseon to supply them with raw water. And it's kind of, it's a mutually beneficial contract where we supply them with water, and then we can draw it back from that whenever we need to. I mean, obviously, we stay in communication, work with them, and, you know. But what is not accounted for is the, the electric expenses for pumping that water every single day. And that's, I believe, is about $9300 a month. So that is, that is, that is an expense, and wear, tear, and maintenance on those voters are cheap. So that's something that's, we're gonna have to factor in when we renegotiate that contract with Waseon, so.
That's like a million gallons a day or something?
Jeff, how much do we pump to Waseon per day?
Did he?
No questions for Jeff.
Lori.
Okay, how long of a contract is it?
20?
Uh, yeah, it's 20-year, it's gonna expire in 2022. So that contract's coming out.
So for 20 years? So whoever did the contract, they didn't think about the electric costs to pump the water?
There's a, there's a trade-off for how much water we draw back, pump to them, there's a formula for, but it's, none, none of it has ever, none of it benefits us.
Okay.
Joel, what's the average increase on the water side for average resident?
Uh, it's roughly, just to ballpark, it's about $4.
So, I think we discussed this once before, but the, part of the benefit of the new plant was going to be less chemical, since we're getting ready to, to do that. What is the reason behind the fact that it's not quite as beneficial that way? We're, we're not spending that much less in chemical than we were, can you just explain that?
We still have to spend money on chemical treatment.
Right.
And so, since the process changed, some of the chemical treatment processes changed, too. So, I mean, you'll see the bids when they, when they come up, it's actually later on down here. But still have a chemical cost, it just wasn't enough that, that decrease in the amount of chemicals used is not enough to offset the increase in electrical costs. Some of the other operational stuff, like I said, bigger building spaces, more to heat in the wintertime, so you have, you know, the natural gas prices and where we're also, it's just a lot of those little things that get added into the cost that add up.
And if I remember correctly, Jeff, during our tour, said the cost of those chemicals is increasing pretty substantially year over year.
Yeah, man, I wish he'd wake up. No, he, it looks like he's not muted either, so I don't know, maybe it's just an audio issue, isn't it? Jeff, are you there? Yeah, it's just like with anything, though, I mean, your, your chemical costs are gonna go up, but it's gonna go up, you know, chemical costs, just like, I would liken it to medical supplies for EMS, that.
Can you hear me?
Ah, there we go, Jeff.
I've been spending five minutes trying to get this thing on mute. Just showing up to the meeting, I suppose. Now, to answer the question for the last round, so, we typically set anywhere from 2.2 to 2.5 million gallons over the height for them, so, um, just depends on what our operation is, and, you know, going back to the, the water use with the wholesale customers, I mean, it, it really will have production amount that we will go down with that, but. In turn, our electric pump, uh, high-circuit pumps and sending water to Waseon. So anytime that we're shut down, we're using our biggest pump that we have, send water to, to Waseon reservoir.
Thank you, Jeff.
To go back to the chemicals, I mean, we do, we are spending, you know, less on the chemical side of things than what we, where with the existing plant, the line soda softening. There is quite a bit less that we spend on the chemicals, but I just think that the amount of electric that we use offsets that more than what we would like to see. We went from running two pumps during production throughout the day with a raw pump and a high-circuit pump, to now running nine pumps at any given time for the full 12-hour production. So pressurizing the membrane vessels, sending the water from the clear wells over to, through the UV units, and then out to the, to the system, you know, that's, that's a lot higher electrical use having that many pumps running off, pretty much all day.
Can't we negotiate a better rate with the electric company that we're getting the power from?
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff, did he answer the question on the going up year to year? What do the chemical costs average in terms of increased costs?
Um, our, our, our most used chemical, obviously, you'll see that in the recommendations and worth of bids coming up. It's aluminum chlorohydride, which is our ACH, we use an abundance of that chemical. It's the one that we've kind of gone up with the last couple of years, there's not much for competitive bidding for that chemical. But all of our other chemicals actually came down this year, maybe besides one other one. So, I mean, it, it just kind of fluctuates from year to year. We've seen quite a bit in cost savings than when we put the plant online. I think now that a lot of the vendors are seeing what we're actually using throughout the year, how much we're using, and they can reflect that in their bids. So, obviously, like Joel said, we had a, we had a really dry summer this year, we had a really wet summer the year before. You know, hopefully, we can get more of a normalized year, and we can keep optimizing that chemical usage to where we can get down, hopefully, to that target level that we were hoping to see at, from before the project.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, one thing is, you know, back to the, you know, growing rooftops, it's a, it's a big deal. Short of, you know, anything else, I mean, we, we would, I, I believe this, and here's where it comes into. Short of, you know, anything else, I mean, we would, I believe this, and here's where it comes into, well, finding places to cut. Well, when you, when you start doing that at this point, because, you know, operations runs pretty lean, the water plant, you know, staffing levels are where they're at. It's, it's hard to, but cutting somewhere else would be reductions in service. That's where, you know, you get into the projects versus, okay, so let's cut some of these projects out. We've got projects out or more projects out, then what? You know, you wait for them to break, then you factor in how many breaks do you have? It starts to break, you know, like Orwigan, Wellsted, you've had several breaks on that line. Or like Glenwood, we replaced it this year, had many breaks on that line. So it's kind of hard to, you know, you keep putting Band-Aids on these lines until a certain point, then you have to do a, you gotta do a, you know, replacement, you know, or sections, like sections of lines. So, you know, you wait for it to break and then service it, and then it just becomes a constant maintenance issue, a business interruption or whatever, basically. So there is a, there's a, the service value diminishes greatly when we start cutting more places at this point. So like I said, this was, this list was already pared down a little bit. It was pared down more too. Which means we're going up projects and maintenance, maintenance pieces. Just wanted to kind of, I'm sure, you know, people ask and people are wondering, what have you done to, you know, optimize your operation in total? And I feel like we run pretty lean now, as it is. And even now more so with the pared-down project list.
What's that?
Got my quote.
Going to make a motion. Billy, what's the verbiage we need here for the motion?
Same as before.
Got that, Rox?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rox, please call roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can move on to item K four, discussion or action on recommendation of water and sewer committee to amend codified ordinance section nine-two-five-point-zero-eight, placement of containers.
Joel. All right, thank you. The Water Sewer Refuge Recycling and Litter Committee met on Monday and recommended to adopt an ordinance that puts a time limit on how long cans can be set out at a curb at a residence when people put their garbage out. People put their garbage out, they got to take their cans in. The, you know, similar to what Waseon, it's right here, okay. Says shall be removed within twenty-four hours after pickup. Right now, what we have in the books is sitting at the point where we don't have a time limit. So this would just put a time limit. This isn't something that's really abused in, in anywhere in the city except in Spotty at least, a whole places. It was, you know, a recommendation from the committee to adopt the Waseon, the twenty-four hours. Couple of things that were discussed were, you know, length of time, you know, how long do you go? What about when somebody wants to leave for the weekend? Or whatever, or they don't, you know, they're going to be gone for a couple of days. Is there any way to, you know, allow for people enough time, you know, have it brought back up to their, to their house? Or wherever the residence. And then there was the, the whole, and I've seen this in my career, and I know Chief, Chief Matt and I have talked about this, about, you know, the enforcement piece would be, you know, not to be heavy-handed, but just as a, if it becomes abusive or in any way, shape or form of an issue, then it gives us a reason to go knock on the door and say, hey, you're not allowed to do this. Please put your cans up, or there could be a citation. So like I said, most, most people, you know, see this as a huge issue in too many places. Maybe, maybe one or two, that's about it. I don't really have anything else to add, other than, what's any of the other committee members have anything to say? Oh, I did bring up, there is one thing, sorry, pardon. It was on the chronic complaint or the, or the neighbor dispute complaint type of, of potential. You know, there's always that chance that, you know, you know, and I've run across this a lot. You know, when you have neighbors disputing with each other and calling at each other all the time, and somebody loses their can out, well, it's been twenty-five hours, we need to cite them, you know. And, you know, we get a complaint, we respond. That's, you know, that's what we do. You know, I see the, the twenty-four hour thing, I just, I think it's fairly common. I think there's another one too, Westerville, I don't think it's in here, but Westerville was also one that was.
Westerville, I believe, was the end of the following day.
Yeah, yes, yeah, 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 that's right. So instead of twenty-four hours, the garbage is picked up at seven, and then, you know, you have twenty-four hours until seven. So they, they did till the, till the end of the next day. So more like a thirty-six hour.
One thing we touched on was if a resident was going to be out of town or gone for an extended period of time, they could always proactively call the city just to let us know. That way, we can keep an eye out for those call-in complaints if that were to arise. But I'm disappointed Mr. Comodall's not here to give us two, two cents on this. Think it was just one of those things, like, might as well have something on the books just to keep the aesthetics of the city at a high, high standard.
What would the penalty be for not following this rule?
Ah, great question for Billy. I'm going to punt. Billy, can I punt to you?
We can, well, I'd have to check the other ordinances in that section, but we can make it, you know, whatever you like. I mean, I imagine it wouldn't be much more than a fine.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it seemed a little extreme for probably the few number of people who abuse that, but like Joel pointed out, if you don't have anything on the books, and you really can't do anything about those that are kind of ridiculous about it, so. I didn't have a problem with it, I just didn't know twenty-four hours was kind of.
That's, I'm kind of leaning towards the, like, the thirty-six hour that, like, Westerville's doing, that.
The end of the following day.
That sounds a lot better, because maybe you didn't, maybe went out of town that first night and you came back later the next day, and I don't, I just. It's better than it sitting there for five days, but I can understand twenty-four hours. I mean, if we made a.
Yeah, if you, if you're agreeable to it, you can make a motion to set it at whatever, direct Billy to draft legislation to modify that section of the codified ordinances and add a stipulation for a time limit for when, you know, the, what are they calling up here? I have to look at it, so. Garbage cans and bags shall be maintained and good use and shall be picked up and brought back up after twenty-four hours. So whatever, thirty-six hours, could be forty-eight hours, whatever the case may be.
I just like the end of the, of the following day.
Yep, I like that wording.
The end of the following day.
And we need to include recycling bins as well, not just garbage cans, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to direct the law director to modify the current ordinance to, to include language that limits, well, what's the word?
That establishes a time limit.
Establishes a time limit of, to the end of the following day of pickup.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right. Move on to item K five, discussion or action, award chemical contracts for the water treatment and wastewater treatment plants for year twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, I'm just going to turn it right over to Jeff. And on your screen, you'll see all of the bids that were received for all the different chemicals for the water plant and wastewater plant. So Jeff, you're on, and I've got the, the bids up on the screen for everybody to see.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah, pretty, pretty standard here. Took the bids, opened on the sixteenth, we received six bids. The last one, liquid aluminum sulfate is the only chemical that's used at the wastewater treatment plant. Everything else is used at the water plant. Like I said before, pretty standard, everything was pretty close to what we had priced for last year. There were some that were quite a bit less, and then we had a couple that were just a little bit more. Seem to be balancing out, getting a better idea on what the total usage is for the year. So hopefully, we can attract some, some more companies to bid in the future, but this is what we have to work with for twenty-twenty-one.
So we're, we're recommending the award of contracts for the, all the bidders, the winning apparent low bidders on the applicable contracts.
Do we need a motion to accept or to draft legislation?
Motion to accept.
Yep, to award.
To award, to award, yeah.
So.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jeff.
Item K six, discussion or action, award of the Euclid Avenue Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
Thank you, Council President. Again, we received bids for the Euclid Avenue Sewer Project, and Brian Excavating was the apparent low. The, yeah, a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand eight-thirty-three, I believe. The estimate was at two-ten. But what we budgeted was, because we just carried over what was budgeted for twenty-twenty and put it into twenty-twenty-one, so we just carried over what was budgeted, and I think that was at a hundred-and-eighty thousand. So we came in under that, I guess, would have been the old, the old estimate. And then, so we're at a one-sixty-eight eight-thirty-three.
Have we used Brian Excavating recent, I thought we had on. You were happy with them?
Yes.
Awesome.
We got it for twenty-seven.
Great.
And they were here before that.
Yeah. All right.
Motion to award the bid.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Is there a second?
Yes, Laurie did.
No, I'm sorry, you. Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has been awarded. Item K seven, discussion or action on the Van Hining Pumping Station Replacement Project.
Hey, Ben, you're packing, you got the memo here. We didn't get any bids for this project. We believe that it was due to a couple of things. But the main thing is, you know, I'm talking to some of my contacts and Chad, I couldn't talk about some of yours. And Dave, you can chime in too, you know, only. Material prices, Tony mentioned this earlier, material prices for everything is just high. Concrete, really high. Steel prices are up, and I think they're, they're actually going up the first of the year again. I mean, it's, it's everything, material prices, everything is just very, very expensive right now. So this job is, it's a long-term control plant project, and it's, it's due to be completed in December of twenty-twenty-three. I'm kind of thinking about, want to give it a little time to think about this. But, you know, one thing could be, you know, modify the plans somehow, which I, I don't think that's the best option. The design we have is, is solid, especially because we're dealing with a railroad. But, you know, we can always just raise the, the engineer's estimate to match what the material prices are at now.
What's the estimate now?
Well, within the, the published engineer's estimate is one-point-six-two-five million.
So, but also, one of the thoughts is postpone it until next year. Postpone it, re-post it, or rebid it, say this time next year, or maybe sooner. Just kind of let, let, hopefully, something happens where the market for material prices goes back to, it normalizes.
There's no penalty for putting it out? If it's a long-term.
Not yet.
Yeah, not yet, that's right, not yet. Twenty-twenty-three, yeah, I mean, we've got, we have time, we have time. So what's the thoughts that are going around right now? There's a reason why we would recommend to move forward with a bid sooner than that, but we'll bring it back. Right now, we've got no bids, so there's no reason to take any action right now. We've got time to think about this.
Would this be a debt service project as well?
Yep.
So we would need to consider how the, the bond rates are going, or if we wait for the prices for the, the material to come down, but the rate that we're going to get the debt at, or are we going to be able to get that?
The funding source I was utilizing, the rates are very stable. I've used them consistently since two thousand.
Use your five, please. I'm sorry, Chad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've used them consistently since two thousand and ten, and it's always been less than one percent.
Oh, okay. Good.
Right now, it is at point seven. When we did the EQ basin, it was point-six-seven, and wastewater plant's going to be point-seven, and Williams Pump Station, I believe, is at one.
So that really doesn't have much of a effect on, on that, okay?
So then we're okay to wait then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
It's a good point, though.
Good, yeah.
Because we're going to lose, yeah, it's a great, it's a really good point.
No, we, we took that into consideration when we weighed our options. Personally, I would recommend just waiting.
We don't have any, we don't need to make any, anything on that one. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that? All right, move on to item K eight, discussion or action, change order number two to Jones and Henry Engineers for the twenty-twenty-one wastewater treatment plant improvements project. for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvements project.
Hey, I'm this one, I mean, you guys have been dealing with directly this whole time, just explaining.
Sure. Essentially, there was a request to increase their contract during the course of the design. We required several revisions, including breaking out of the valve compressors, which we did. Design of a new generator, once we discovered our existing generator could not service the plant. They created separate proposal documents for the screens and grid system. All the extra work we had them do was in an effort to reduce the construction cost, you will see in the new project, and I believe they were very successful at that. But all that added work was outside the scope of their original contract. They're requesting a change order for $82,000 to keep them in line with what it takes to do that additional design. Discussed it with Dave and Jay and discussing with Joel. Their request seems very reasonable for the money they saved us. I just request that we grant their change order request for the $82,000 and that will be, if granted, that will be rolled into the costs that will go to DFA and that has been calculated into our budget number.
Approximate savings would be how much?
About $23,000 so far.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
That's pretty easy math.
Pretty easy math, I can do that.
So just need a motion to.
Motion.
Improve that?
Yes, request a motion for the $82,000 for change order number two to Jones and Henry.
Good job, Ken.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Hey, item K9, discussion or action, approval of crack ceiling contract with American Pavements Incorporated.
This is a request to approve of the contract for American Pavements to lock in the 2020 crisis. These are from the 2020 state contract.
All right, have a motion to approve?
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item K10, discussion or action, approval of 2020 write-offs for income tax, utilities and EMS billings.
Thank you. The total for 2020 for the write-offs for unacceptable account is $63,966.87. This is down from 2019, it was around $92,000.
All right, going in the right direction. Kelly, do you have any, anything to add of why that is going? Is that your department, some changes you've made or?
It just depends on the individual, if they're able to recollect it, if they have a bankruptcy, if they are deceased, if Wiltman is able to collect them. We are now able to do attorney general collections for the income tax and that EMS side, but not the utility side. So we have seen increased collections on the little that we've done this year, so hopefully next year it'll weigh up more.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, item K11, discussion or action, December 2020 replacement pages to the codified ordinances. That we will direct the law director to draft legislation. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Second.
We need any discussion on that or?
Nope.
Anybody else have an opinion? Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Item K12, discussion or action, transfer of liquor permit from Ottawa Oil Company Incorporated to J Petroleum Incorporated for 330 South Perry Street. Joel?
Nothing to really report on this. I believe that a no action is, is an approval.
J Petroleum, did they purchase Ottawa? Yeah, South Shell.
South Side Shell, yes.
All right, item K13, discussion or action, accept a $250 donation from Richard Lesney to the Napoleon Police Department.
And here's his note on his notepad here. Dear Chief, thank you for all of your good work for all of us, sorry, it hurts I breathe that. All of us for this year, please use this gift for a party for your team.
Thanks.
Richard Lesney, $250.
Very nice. Do you have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
All right, go around the table here, start with Kelly.
I don't have anything tonight other than Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Thank you, same to you. And go with Molly?
Um, we got to tour the operations facility with Jeff Rethie, that was really nice and appreciated. And then also, Tony, thank you for going over the Buckeye Trail and working on that. I've already had people reach out to me and say, it was done, you know, it's great, so, thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Same to you. Lori?
Merry Christmas, that's it.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
It's always nice when we beat defiance. Congratulations to the girls' basketball team for beating defiance. We welcome Love's Truck Stop to Napoleon, welcome Love's Truck Stop. Was driving this morning back towards Napoleon and I could see the sign, like, where is that new sign? Oh, it's a Love Truck Stop sign, just different, going through trees a different way. So, um, other municipalities have cable TV as one of the utilities and we don't. Is there a reason for that? I know there is.
Yeah.
Can we have an answer for that sometime in January?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas to you. Dan?
Mr. Chairman, do you have anything for the Safety and Human Resource Committee, our magistrate city manager?
I'm sorry, uh, safety, no, we don't.
Okay, we will not have a meeting next Monday then for that committee and that's all.
All right, thank you. Ken?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ross?
Uh, I think it's important that going into 2021, we earmark the funds collected from reciprocity decision to emergency services and staffing. If we could add that to the agenda in the coming weeks, I think that would be, be vital. Second, I just noticed the council meetings video has not been uploaded to YouTube since November 3rd. Had a citizen reach out about that.
I forgot about that.
Okay, we are.
Other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
All right, thank you.
I know I was getting up, well, you said November 3rd?
Yeah, day before election.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Joel?
Thank you, Council President, just wanted to thank Council for the, for the statement, appreciate that, thank you. Let's say that during the, when I went around, hasn't passed yet though, right? Yeah, still got a couple of moves. I just, just to follow up, I don't have a answer yet from the Henry County Transportation Network from Mr. Seehold, so still just having her back. And when we get a chance, we'll have her come in, some council meeting, maybe at the beginning of the meeting, just kind of give everybody an update on how that, that bus is being utilized. And happy holidays and happy new year to anybody who's able to see each other. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things here. Tony, we, Ross and I took you driving, we were in, was it at Meyer Holt's Park? And we were trying to dodge the, the potholes on there and I, I didn't know if it's just this time of year, if they're that bad. I haven't driven down there in I don't know how long, but it was, it was pretty bad, I was surprised. So if you check into that sometime, be great. I know we've talked about the Christmas lights in town, but I just noticed quite often now just how great that they look. So thank you again for the, from the chamber and the electric department putting those up. Do you have a request for executive session for compensation of personnel? Do you have a motion to go into executive session for compensation of personnel?
So.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
And another executive session for economic forward development, thank you.
Second.
Hey Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
All right, good, I have a motion to come out of executive session for compensation of personnel.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, no action taken. And do you have a motion to come out of executive session for economic development?
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item M, approve payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Stand approved, could I have a motion for adjournment? Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
We are adjourned.